Madam President, are you ready for me to call roll? Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia.
Here.
Alexis Grimes.
Here.
Erin Johnson.
Here.
Jim McKay.
Here.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
With a quorum of the board present, I now call our February 25th Board meeting to order at 6:15. And it is exciting, there's a lot of discussion tonight. Y'all keep talking, we'll just get up here and don't worry about it. We'll let you know if anything big happens. We'll be moving on to our opening ceremony with our pledge of allegiance. Now for this part, we will need your attention. Cadet Seaman Aubrey Akins will be leading us of the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School. Cadet Akins is a sophomore and the first year cadet. She is a member of the Vista Ridge High School Marching Band and Navy Junior ROTC Arm Drill Physical Fitness Teams. Cadet Akins recently earned designation as Cadet of the Month for the month of December 2020. The Cadet of the Month Award recognizes cadets who have demonstrated loyalty, reliability, patriotism, and exceptional performance of duty. Cadet Akins' exceptional performance of duty reflected more favorably on the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, her school, and the district. Well done, thank you Cadet Seaman Aubrey Akins. And now if you please join me for the pledge.
Will you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
All right, I am very excited to announce the next section of our agenda is recognition. And I believe we will be seeing all of our recognitions in one video, is that correct Dr. Garing? So you can look there in TMEA, All-State High School Band and Choir Students, our 5A State Football Runner-Up Cedar Park High School, and our National Cheerleading Association Virtual Competition Champions, Rouse High School.
An impressive 43 Leander ISD students achieved All-State Band or Choir through the Texas Music Educators Association. A special shout-out goes to Cedar Park High School Choir standout Kayden Talia, who made All-State for the fourth year straight, a first for a Leander ISD student. These talented students are worthy of recognition in any year for such an accomplishment, but making All-State during a pandemic required students to complete their audition virtually. Congratulations to these hard-working students and their dedicated directors. In a season like no other, the Cedar Park Timberwolves made a playoff run to remember, going undefeated until the 5A State Championship game. The state finalists Timberwolves finished 13-1, won their fourth regional title in school history, and notched a second consecutive undefeated district championship. In the past 12 years, Cedar Park football has only lost five times in district play. This year's team had the highest scoring average in school history at 51 points per game, and had a total of 13 seniors honored as academic All-State, three of them on the Elite Team. What a season, what a team, what an accomplishment. The Rouse High School Cheer Team is the latest LISD Spirit Squad to earn state and national recognition. Rouse Cheer claimed first place in the Varsity Division of the National Cheerleading Association Virtual Competition. Congratulations to these outstanding athletes on winning the national championship.
Well, that is awesome and a great way to start our board meeting. Superintendent Garing, do you have any remarks for us?
Nothing for you tonight, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, I know last time we mentioned, this might be a good time if you have any updates on committees that you're on, or any other remarks that you have for the community.
The Diversity and Inclusion Committee, we've been meeting, of course. The snow apocalypse kind of threw a wrench in the listening tours. We had those scheduled and got them underway, and then we had to stop. So those have been rescheduled and the dates have been published on the LISD page, so folks can sign up for those. But there's a new set of listening tour dates.
Thank you for that update Gloria, Jim?
So I want to, first of all, apologize because I've had a lot of caffeine today, so I'm probably going to talk fast. But in my role, my current role in the military, we've had an uptick in suicidality. And we've started something called Resiliency Nuggets. And what I'd like to do is share one of those, it's a real easy one for all of us to do. At some point, once a day, grab your cellphone, scroll through your contacts, and click on somebody you haven't talked to in a week, or month, several months, and just send them a text message and say, hey, I was thinking about you, hope you're doing okay. Be surprised at the response you get from that, and when you're done with that conversation, ask them to do the same thing in their contact list. We have got to force multiply, reaching out to people that aren't really expecting us to talk to them and check in with them. With the snow apocalypse and everything else that's going on, I don't need to remind everybody what the level of stress is. We're focusing a lot on students, as we should, but the adults need to check in with one another as well. So, once again, if you would, once a day, pick a contact out of your contact list, send them a text, let them know you're thinking about them, thank you.
Board members, you'll also know that our core beliefs are laminated and by our desk. I do love that because I can refer to it as we're having our conversations. We also have our Brave Space Commitment discussion laminated there, and of course our marbles as well, our desks are getting full. All right, if there are no other comments, we will now move on to our Citizen Comment portion of the agenda. Please note that this format is not a conversation or back-and-forth discussion. So we'll ask that Citizen Comments, when you come up to speak, that you respect the limitation as such. Please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our Board Operating Procedures enumerates further requests, but I will sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You have up to three minutes to address the Board of Trustees, and we'll hear a chime when your three minutes are up. We have seven speakers signed up to speak tonight. Our first individual will be signed up as Lori for the book club, Lori Hines. We can hear you, but you've got to press the mic button, the little button with the little...
The one on the right.
...face with the little... There, you got that one.
All right. Erin, I apologize in advance. Thank you for taking my testimony today. If you have children under 18 years of age, you may want them to leave the room. I will be doing a book review from a 12th grade selection for LISD called "In the Dream House." If you haven't read the book, it's a very detailed memoir of the author's relationship with a controlling, violent, and same-sex partner. Before I begin, I would like to mention the false dichotomy that seems pervasive. No one is asking to ban books. We are asking for age-appropriate reading material that advances independent thought and critical thinking. This is a chapter, this is from the chapter "Dream House" as romance novel. "A week after you get back from Savannah, you are fucking on your bed and you come and she says, 'I love you.' You are both sweaty, the silicone strap-on is still in your body. When dating men, you always loved feeling a cock soften inside you afterwards. Now you pant on her chest and slide off, and it springs back to where it was, slick and erect, but spent just the same." The next is from the chapter "Dream House" is erotica. And just because you can buy everything on Amazon, this is what we're asking our children to read, it's a strap-on dildo. "She shaves her cunt smooth, and it glows like the inside of a cunt shell. She loves wearing a harness, you suck her off that way, and she comes like it's real, bucking and lifting off the mattress. A Harvard professor of comparative literature says that discussing the more erotic translation of the 1001 Arabian Nights can be difficult to discuss in mixed company. I can't imagine discussing dildos, cocks, and cunts in a class at high school. Netflix uses maturity ratings and classifications so that viewers can, and I quote, 'make informed viewing choices for you and your family.' Parents in LISD deserve no less. "In the Dream House" is so explicit that introducing it to minors probably constitutes child abuse under Texas law, putting a lot of us in the position of reporting to Child Protective Services. This book, along with Lolita, that is currently being taught to an eighth-grade class, could definitely be considered grooming. If you haven't read Lolita, just know that Jeffrey Epstein named his private airplane the Lolita Express. I ask, please revisit the book review process to ensure all voices are heard. Review the criteria for what is an acceptable book. Awards are a meaningless criteria. Provide accurate, thorough descriptions of the books to parents. Permission slips should be given to parents so they can opt out or opt in at books, thus allowing book choices that align with each family's values."
Thank you Lori.
You're welcome.
All right, our next speaker is Daryl Frost, coming to speak to us about the composition of Shaq.
Good evening, thank you for your service to our community as members of the Board. I know that takes a lot of time and effort. My name is Daryl Frost, I've lived in the district since 2019, and I have two nieces and a nephew who are LISD students. I'm here tonight to discuss the development and administration of the School Health Advisory Committee, or SHAC. As you know, the Texas Legislature has mandated since 1995 that all ISDs in Texas have a SHAC to increase parent participation in their children's education. How these committees are structured is directly correlated to how well they function, how much genuine citizen input is obtained, and how much of their input is truly used by the school board. In Section 28.004 of the Texas Education Code, it is clearly stated that a majority of the members must be persons who are parents of students enrolled in the district and who are not employed by the district. This requirement is quite specific, which is somewhat out of the ordinary for legislation pertaining to local issues, as elected state officials have traditionally preferred to reserve a fair amount of autonomy for communities to make decisions that affect them so directly. However, in this case, the legislature was extremely explicit because the authors of the bill wanted to make sure that there was not undue influence on the parents and the committee from school staff. As expressed by the American Planning Association and Citizen Committees, the citizen is there to offer their input but can be intimidated by those that are professionally in the field. They state that, quote, "Citizen advisory committees are an attempt to create a bridge between the official governmental agency and the people from whom they plan." To say that, quote, "The staff will not do anything to influence" is a moot point, as the mere presence of staff indirectly speaks intimidation. The first draft of Shaq members came out in August, and it had six parents and 14 district staff on it. When challenged by the Board that this was not structured correctly according to the statute, after about six weeks of discussion, the list now stands as 27 parents, 15 staff members, and six community members, along with one Board member. Why so many staff? Because they can also vote per the Education Code. They can easily lead the parents in the way they think is best, and thereby negate the whole reason the Shaq was created in the first place, to obtain true parental input from the community. My suggestion is that you not allow the staff to vote, but simply be there as a resource to inform the parents, and not sway them one way or the other way, in order to assure that you truly get your parental input that you have requested and required by statute. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Daryl. Ally Roblosky, to talk about the ESCE communities.
Got it. Good evening, my name is Ally Roblosky, and I am here on behalf of my special education team to talk about the most recent changes to the ECSE program in Leander ISD. To give you some background about myself, I'm an ELE teacher at Winkley. I'm currently in my eighth year teaching, and I've had the opportunity to be at Winkley for the entirety of my career. I truly cannot say enough positives about my campus. The administration, the staff, the teachers, and most importantly, the students. The students are at the heart of absolutely everything that we do. And in this environment, we have created more than just a strong school culture, we have truly created a family. So, when our team was informed two days ago that not only were we being separated next year, but sent to dead front campuses, we were heartbroken. We were heartbroken not only because of the loss of the incredible dynamic we had with each other, but yet another change in an already incredibly tumultuous year. All students, but especially young students in particular, thrive on routine and consistency. Brené Brown says in her book Dare to Lead that as educators, we must create a space where students can take off their armor and open their hearts. I believe that in LISD, we facilitate this each and every day. We pride ourselves on creating a safe, secure, nurturing, and supportive environment where students can be seen. We pride ourselves on being a family. So, you can understand how I felt as a teacher when this sense of security was suddenly ripped away. I understand that this decision centers around the desire to have all early childhood classes and pods to better facilitate collaboration, and I also understand that this is due to budget constraints as a result of the coronavirus. I want to make it clear that I completely support the idea of collaboration and teamwork. However, I also believe that this must happen the right way. Not asking teachers how they felt about this momentous change was not right. Moving students from their home campuses that they are slowly becoming familiar with is not right. Currently at Winkley, I have nine special education students and four extended-day students in person. Out of these 13, 11 of them have Winkley as their home campus. I'm confused as to how moving these students for their early childhood experience to another campus, and then expecting them to return in just a year or two for kindergarten, is what is truly best for them. Out of all the schools in LISD, our elementary campuses have the longest amount of time with our students. For your average student, this is six years. For the ELE program, it can be up to nine years. This is nine years that we have to work with these students, to form bonds, to build roots, to give them a place to take off their armor. I believe that the more consistent the environment they have to do this in, the more they will grow. I feel like I can speak for my fellow educators when I say we did not get into education for convenience. We are here for the students. And while I know that these decisions are being made well beyond my sphere of influence, I urge you to take the time to consider just how great of an impact this move could be. Thank you.
Thank you Ally. Gerald Fratter, to talk about the truth about why we are here at your meeting.
Good evening, board members. My name is Gerald Prater, and I'm here to give a brief presentation tonight about truth. I got three quick points that I want to bring up in my presentation. The first one is the truth about conflict. It's obvious to all of us, anyone that's watching, that we are engaged in an ongoing conflict because we come to your meetings periodically to express our concerns. And at times, that conflict can become very confrontational as emotions kind of rise. I want you to hold on to that point, and I'm going to come back to it at the end of my presentation. Okay? I asked myself, what's the source of this conflict? As I looked through your agenda items tonight, I identified what I think is the key source of it. It's in Agenda Item Number 8A3, where you're going to discuss a presentation that's titled "Community-Based Accountability." And in that presentation, you're going to discuss standards that should be applied to all LISD students. And I think we can all agree that standards are a good thing. But as I went down that presentation, Slide 9, the second bullet, I think identifies one of the key things, is the conflict. And that is an item that's called, "You ultimately wish to establish core beliefs in the students," what we might call core values. And I think this is the key thing, is that when our values as parents are in direct conflict with the values that we see being pushed, that's, this is really the key, I think, source of the conflict that we're engaged in, and it's true. And that brings me to the second point about convictions. We, as parents, come to these meetings with a message, and that message is that we're not prepared to give up on the concerns that we have in areas where we see possible harm being done to our children. This is an area that we have strong convictions, and to us, they're not negotiable. And I've got a lot of different areas where I can go, but for brevity's sake tonight, I'm going to cover two books that talk about those convictions and what truth is. The first one, My Pocket Constitution, is, many people today falsely believe that our government is a democracy. A close study of this, it is not. It's far from a democracy. What we actually have is a constitutional republic. And a key thing about that is that, in that republic, the rights and concerns of the individual are utmost. We do not make decisions based on what's the most popular, and much worse, we don't make decisions based on what the government decides. My second source of truth is this. For many of us, this is their ultimate source of truth. This is what determines our values, those things, the conflict. And I would never, ever go and demand that my values be taught in school. And I would respectfully ask that you not teach values to my kids that I don't believe and share either. Last point, the last point on our presentation is going to come back to that thing about confrontation and hostility. The Lord has given me a great deal of peace in my walk in the ministry with Him, peace to understand that I don't have the power to change anybody's mind. I can't change your mind, and only you can change your mind. And hostility, I don't want you to make the mistake of believing that when we come, our intention is for hostility. It is not. Jesus, I'm going to give you a quote from the Bible, one quick quote where he says in-
Gerald, can you do your last sentence for us?
Okay. The last sentence is that Jesus says that the world hates Him because He testifies that they, that what they're doing is evil. But in actually, in actuality, what he's saying there is a statement about love. He calls us to love people that we don't agree with all the time. So, when we come here, it's not out of hate, or anger, or hostility. It's really out of love and respect. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Gerald. All right. We have Carolyn Slaven up to talk about community accountability, equity, and crisis response. Carolyn, you can go ahead and sit to the middle. And then Jocelyn Merchant, to talk about SHAC, if you want to go ahead and sit over to the other side.
Hello, Leander ISD Board and Dr. Gearing. I come here today as a proud employee of the district. My name is Carolyn Slaven. I am the bilingual librarian at Reed Elementary. In the wake of the winter storm, I witnessed Herculean efforts by all of our staff. I want to give special thanks to our maintenance crews, as well as Child Nutrition Services. Also, thank you to our board members and administrators here for getting out in the community. I also want to take this opportunity to use the classic improv strategy known as "yes and," as in, yes, the district has provided amazing resources and fantastic services to its families and students, families and students, and we can make more plans to improve our response in a crisis. There is no better time to reflect on what we are able to do than right now. As meals were served in middle school campuses this Monday and Tuesday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., many families continued to struggle with food insecurity. The single parent who was working while their middle schooler watched their third grader. The families in rural areas who depend on the buses for transportation, because even the gas money to come to a middle school and back would be an extra expense that they can't afford. The stay-at-home parent without a vehicle, caring for four children while their spouse takes their only car to work. We have the capacity to provide meals and assistance to these families, in addition to the families that were able to come and pick up their meals. It's not going to be what's easiest or what's most convenient for us as a district, but it can be what is best for our students and the community. I truly hope that we never have to experience anything like what we went through during the past couple of weeks. Our campus was able to work with Child Nutrition Services to help find solutions this time, but we realized that having a system in place would have been much better. One idea, for example, would be to utilize the bus routes. Professionals could run a normal bus route, but with food deliveries. If this occurred at the normal morning and afternoon times, similar to a typical school day, we would undoubtedly be able to get meals out to the families that truly need it most. Our most vulnerable populations were affected most by the winter storm. And when we are more aware of the needs of our community, the more we can do to serve. I hope that this will inspire us to make a plan for the future, to reach out to all of our families in times of crisis. Again, I truly appreciate your efforts, and they have not gone unnoticed. I am so proud to be a part of a district that fully believes that when we know better, we do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. All right, Jocelyn.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, and thank you for your service on the LISD School Board. My name is Jocelyn Merchant, and I live here in the LISD District. I am coming to speak to you tonight about how your School Health Advisory Committee was appointed and my concerns. According to the Education Code 28.004, the Board of Trustees shall appoint at least five members to the SHAC who are not employed by the district, and one of those members shall serve as a chair or co-chair. When citizen participation began back in the '60s, the old-style process of involving the public was often perfunctory, stilted, to go through the motion style of engagement. Typically, they were organized and run from the top down. In many instances, they involved experts, often staff, explaining or seeking support for a completed plan they are supposed to be helping to develop. These type of citizen committees are often done to or for the public, but not with the public. Citizen participation is pursued more to grease the skids for ultimate public acceptance of the project than to inform the substance of the plan. It takes a lot of effort to have in-depth public input, with a lot of care and thought by the elected officials and staff that help to carry out their wishes. During the selection of the SHAC process, there still is open question as to who appointed the committee members, and why is there 14 LISD staff on there that will be voting members of the committee? But tonight, I want to address the concern of the chair and co-chair positions. When the SHAC met for their first Zoom meeting, staff announced the name of a staffer, and that would be the chair. There was no discussion or asking the SHAC members if there were anyone there that wished to be considered as a chair. When the chair was not even offered for, to the committee for a possibility, it took away some of the citizen participation choice. Secondly, when the position of the co-chair was discussed, there was not any explanation of what the position would do. There were some email inquiries of what the position would do, as there were not currently bylaws that laid out the position. When the second Zoom SHAC meeting began, the co-chair was announced without prior notifying anyone on the SHAC, including the representative board member. There were several that were interested in the position, but not given any notice that a co-chair had been selected by staff. Unfortunately, this brings a lot of questions to mind of which need to be answered. One, why was the chair position taken away from the citizen participation? As it states in the statute, it clearly should be offered. And two, why was the co-chair position selected by staff without any vote from the SHAC and without considering those that had indicated they too might have been interested but needed clarification on the role first? Thank you.
Jocelyn, I'm sorry. Clarification. You mentioned bylaws. Bylaws don't address how you're electing chair that you have adopted.
Okay.
No, do your bylaws that you adopted address how you are going to elect chairs from now on?
I can get back with you on that. Thank you.
Maybe the district can also follow up to our Friday memo on how we're doing on our bylaws. Thank you. Michaela Gaither for SHAC.
Good evening. Thank you for your service on the LISD School Board. My name is Michaela Gaither, and I live in the LISD District. I'm here to speak about how our School Health Advisory Committee SHAC was appointed and my concerns. In the Texas Education Code 28.004, it states that the Board of Trustees shall appoint at least five members to the SHAC, of which a majority must be parents of students in the district and not employed by the district. To appoint means to choose, pick, engage. There is concern from many members in the community that it is not clear by whom or when current SHAC members were appointed. In a fall board meeting, administration stated that it was difficult to ascertain who appointed the members, as there was no record. I am not here to place blame, but to state concern. If it can't be ascertained by whom or when current SHAC members were appointed, how can the board have assurance that the Education Code 28.004's requirements are being met? According to the International City Planning Association, establishing legitimacy in the appointment process is critical. If the governing board genuinely wants to demonstrate a desire for public input, the board is to choose, pick, and engage the public to serve, not delegate this job to someone else like staff. The public understands that 14 staff members were chosen by administration, then approved by the board, but that does not meet the spirit of the approval process. Why were so many staff members sitting as voting members? I would also like to request that the board publicly identify who appointed the 27 parents and when they were appointed. Even as the selection was taking place, several board members requested clarification of where the appointees came from, and the question was never fully answered. The list should not have been finalized. With a murky selection process, public confidence will deteriorate. Genuine involvement of stakeholders will give the public confidence that their input matters and that the board is listening. Thank you in advance for responding publicly to my requests regarding the following. First, who is currently serving on the SHAC? Who appointed them? When were they appointed? The board should only allow those that can be verified to have a vote, in order to ensure the board is meeting statutory requirements. Secondly, why are so many staff serving on the committee as voting members? Staff does not fit the criteria of public input. They are paid professionals. Thank you for allowing me to testify tonight.
Thank you. That concludes our citizen comments. We will now be moving on to our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. If there is no request to pull one off, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
I have a motion from Jim, second from Christine. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, board members. This is listed slightly differently in the agenda tonight as superintendent's report because we're going to be covering both our normal COVID-19 report, as well as a little update on the winter storm from last week and some of our responses. So, that's the reason that it looks a little different tonight. These numbers were updated on the 24th, so you can see not much change on the human resources side. These numbers have remained relatively stable over the fall and early spring semesters. Attendance numbers have shifted quite a bit. As you saw last time, from early February, we had some decrease in our secondary student population. That seems to have stabilized somewhat. We've added a few kids, so we continue to tick upwards slightly overall, but we have a lot of our secondary students who had gone out have now come back in person. And so, my surmise then is that that is related to the COVID rash that we had in January and the early part of February. You can see from our numbers that we peaked there at the end of January, and then those numbers have been falling. Of course, last week is an anomaly because we weren't here. Well, we still had a couple. What's interesting to me is as the, as those reports come in, we're seeing fewer and fewer exposures, right? Because a lot of the cases that we're seeing are already quarantined ahead of time. And so, we're managing this situation as best we can. So, switching a little bit to the weather crisis, I wanted to talk just a little bit about what has happened on the child nutrition side specifically. Pensibly is our new Director of Child Nutrition, and we're really happy to have her in the district. She's done a fantastic job of stepping in in very unusual and challenging circumstances and providing great leadership for our child nutrition department. The 250 meals were distributed at Danielson Middle School with the help of Hill Country Community Ministries and several board members, and we really appreciate your help in making sure that our community members had access to meals on the weekend. Already the first two days of this week, we served a significant number of meals. We, of course, are still giving out free meals to any student in the district who comes to pick those up. They've been putting together packets of seven days' worth of meals, both seven breakfasts and seven lunches, and they can come and pick those up. So, you can see this week, so far, almost 54,000 meals served. Water distribution sites and warming centers during the week, we held at a couple of Leander campuses. We started at Leander High School. We had some issue with the water there, as Leander, the city of Leander, had some trouble. So, we had to close that site, and they continue to use that as a water point of distribution. Then we also opened several other campuses on the east side of the district to make sure that our community members had access to running water. LEAF has launched a new emergency fund, and specifically are targeting helping teachers whose materials may have been damaged in any of the buildings that have sustained damage to make sure that we can get them back up and running for in-person learning. So, we have all 44 schools reopened on February 24th. That was Wednesday of this week. 39 of those for in-person learning, and then we'll have 42 open starting March 1st, and 43 of those then by March 8th. So, we are still working at one campus, Black House Creek Elementary School. We have a significant mechanical issue with the cooling system over there. We have a significant mechanical issue with the cooling system over there, and so we'll continue to resolve those issues as best we can. We will bring back Blockhouse Creek Elementary students in person somewhere in the district on March 8th, and it just depends on that facility where we bring them back. So the bad news is we have about a million dollars' worth of damage across the district. The good news is we do have a good insurance carrier, and so we are working very closely with TASB, Risk Management, on making sure that our needs are met in terms of repairs and costs associated with those repairs. And Elaine's office is exploring what we have to do at the federal level to make sure that we get any reimbursement that we're eligible for. So we had 17 schools with damage overall. Five of those were significant. Jimmy and his team and Jerry have done an incredible job of getting those buildings back up and running so that they are ready for learning. And so we have all of those campuses back open again, of course, except for Giddens Elementary and Blockhouse Creek right now. And we'll be opening up Steiner Ranch and Mason and Running Brushy Middle School on Monday. We will have to have some modifications to those buildings on Monday, just to make sure that students stay safe and staff stay safe, but we feel like we can manage that appropriately on Monday. So the issue at Blockhouse Creek is the fresh air intake system. Several of those coils froze in the chiller and have been significantly damaged. Replacing that piece of equipment has a long lead time on it, and so we're working on potential scenarios to see if we can get that building up and running again, and we'll continue to keep you updated as we work through that. And we are bringing you some resolutions to help continue to pay our employees through the crisis, and then we'll also be bringing you some attendance waivers in the next short while from TEA. Of course, we want to continue to thank our incredible staff for the job that they're doing, not only child nutrition and maintenance crews, but everybody who's making it possible to keep our students and our staff engaged in significant learning as we continue through these very unusual times. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
The insurance that we'll be receiving, is that going to help? How is that going to impact our teachers who lost resources? You know, I think about all their personal items of their pretty rugs and light fixtures and other things that they bring in there. How are we going to be able to, will we be able to use those funds to help them replace all of their own classroom, their personal classroom items that they bought or acquired over the years?
So Elaine and her team will be working very closely with principals to make sure that we do as much of that as is possible with TASB Risk Management. And again, LEAF has already started a fund to try to help with any additional costs that teachers may incur in order to replace those items.
Probably a Jimmy question. Jimmy, do we have any uninterrupted power supplies in any of our schools? Like site-built? I'm sorry. My question is, do any of our buildings have uninterrupted power supplies? You know, standby generators that automatically engage when we lose commercial power? So I think it's fair game to talk about this because it was presented in this briefing. I would be interested in looking at, that is, an addition to at least strategic buildings within our district so that we can offer shelters not only during winter events, but if there's a storm and people lose power during the summer. Our school buildings are a community hub, and if we take those necessary steps to ensure that we have some uninterrupted power in some of our buildings, we have a place where we can serve our community in times of need. So it's probably something I may ask for an agenda item or some further discussion on here in the not-too-distant future.
Yeah, we'll certainly look into that, and we'll get you some information in a Friday memo.
All right, Board members. That'll conclude that agenda item. We'll move on to student experience. Consider approval of elementary attendance zoning changes. Remember, we had a discussion on this not too long ago, Monday actually, and so this now is before us for a vote this evening. Jimmy, do you have anything else to bring up to us this evening?
No, ma'am. We did our presentation, and our recommendation is still 28B and 29B for approval.
All right. Board members, unless you have any questions, we need a motion.
I move that the Board adopt Scenario 28B as the 2021-2022 attendance zones. Scenario 29B as the 2022-2023 attendance zones or the year the campus opens, and the student transfer expectations as presented. I second.
All right. I have a motion from Anna, second from Christine. All those in favor? Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to the graduate profile design team update presentation. Good evening. We'll give Sarah just a couple of seconds.
Madam President, may I give a quick update from pertaining to citizens' comments while we wait?
Sure.
Just concerning the Shack Committee, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that Shack is currently working on a set of bylaws. That is under review with the committee at this time, and they plan to vote on those at a coming meeting, so that is under review right now. And then I just wanted to make a quick comment about the book In the Dream House, which is the senior book that our first speaker addressed. That book has already been paused and is pending review through the process that we have, so that is not in our classrooms at this time. It hasn't been through the review cycle yet, but it has been paused and is in the queue to be reviewed soon by that committee.
Thank you. All right, now y'all get to follow that lead.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Garing. Tonight, we are bringing to you an update on our graduate profile redesign process. And I would like to say that I'm honored to be a part of leading this along with Sarah Martinez and Jennifer Collins. And you might remember, in January, Jennifer Collins and I went through an activity with you using an affinity tool, and for your reference, we brought that back. It's hanging on the wall. And we asked you, you know, what are those key skills, dispositions, important things we want our students in Leander to have in our system and think about as they go through and then get ready to graduate? And so you gave us some great feedback, and so I think you'll see that tonight, how much it aligns with a lot of other feedback we've received. So this slide, you will recognize, we are including this in all of our presentations around our shared learning and strategic planning, really just thinking about our current state, the impact on our system, and the desired outcomes. So this is really just a reference slide for you. And you definitely probably recognize this, our visual that shows our road to a strategic plan and all that's involved. And what we really wanted to point out tonight is, even though this is a linear, we call it a road to a strategic plan, it is very iterative. And as far as what we're doing with the graduate profile, along with our vision and mission work, which we had to pause because of our snow, and we'll be bringing the vision work to you on March 9th, and hopefully starting some mission work on March 11th. But all of these things will really be working in parallel and will feed into each other and will align very nicely. That's our goal. So just wanted to remind you of that as you look at this visual. And then our outcome for this evening is to update you on our progress, and I think you'll be really pleased with all the progress and all the input we've received, and then gather additional feedback from you tonight going through a Critical Friends protocol. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
So as we've engaged in this work, this refinement process, our understanding has also expanded, and so I just wanted to sort of remind you about what the graduate profile is and why we have one in the system. I think one of the things that we, who are very close to this work, have come to understand is how critical this document or in this process can be to the district and serve as a vehicle to really help bring to life the vision and the mission that you all are currently working on. So it's very exciting. The graduate or learner profile in a school district is really intended to be the North Star for the district. Another analogy that we've come across is to think of the graduate profile as the DNA of the district. And so it should be that if, as we look at any of the processes or any aspect of our school, if you uncover those and look deeply, you should be able to recognize the graduate profile skills within everything we're doing. And then as Monta Aiken so eloquently stated, the graduate profile truly is a promise to our students as to what they should be able to experience or what their experience here in Leander ISD will look like. So you all have seen this before, our current graduate profile. Just a quick reminder, we have six headers. We've been calling them six kind of main ideas that our current graduate profile has been built on. And then there's sort of a backside of the poster that nobody, or people generally don't see, that includes a lot of information about what those six characteristics or traits are. So as we've engaged in this process, we began with our existing graduate profile and with the work that was done last spring with our Hopes and Dreams conversations, and we've been engaging in this very iterative process. We've come to groups, a number of groups, and presented ideas, gathered initial feedback on what they thought were the most critical headers, just as the work that you all did in January. And then we've gone, taken that back to both a design team, which is a cross-functional team of over 24 people, I think, and then a core team that has sort of formed out of that, that's been doing a little bit of the heavy lifting and meeting regularly. So we're just constantly in this synthesizing the information that we're gathering from folks throughout the district and then applying it to what we've learned and then coming out with something new and then getting some more information. And so we're kind of in this circle that you see there, but we are quickly approaching the blue dot, which is our goal, which would be to have something to you by March. And this is a slide that we shared with you the first time we presented, and it's really just a reference for you. It's for transparency and also just to help support so that you can see all of the pieces of data that we've been looking at. It's honestly because we are continuing to iterate on this work, it's already outdated. There have been a couple more feedback sessions that we've hosted since this was updated, and so we will continue to get that to you. I think what's critical for you to know is that we have done a very thorough process in looking at, we've talked to over 900 people to date through listening sessions, through meeting structures within the district, and through, over 300 students have also had their direct feedback at the campus levels. So as we have engaged in this work, we've also recognized that the work goes well beyond just kind of coming up with what these headers are going to look like and what the content needs to be. And so although we are coming very close to finishing up the content piece, stage of this development, we also recognize that there's a couple of more, there's more work to be done. Primarily, we're ready or we're close to being ready to engage in a graphic design process where we'll try to bring to life the language that we come up with, and then the heavy lifting will happen as we really begin to examine and create new processes if need be into the district to ensure that the qualities that we identify in this graduate profile are brought down to every, to the level of the student in everything that we're doing. So we're very excited about that, engaging in that process soon. I think, oh, so without further ado.
I didn't talk for so long, my microphone.
Here is our most recent prototype. So just to orient you to this prototype, as it stands right now, remember, we're focusing on the content piece, the blue circle, so we are talking about the content. What we have done in all of the work as we've synthesized is we've come up with four primary categories, which are shown there in the gold, and then descriptor statements for each one. One of the, some of the feedback that we've received from our participants as we've gone out and looked at this is that this prototype or this language is much better if we read it out loud, that you can really, you get a better sense of what it is saying to us as we read it out loud. So what I'd like to do is just give you a second to read it to yourselves, and then I'll start with the first one where we read the header statement, which is that LISD learners are empowered to be, and then we read each of the four bullets. And what I'd love to have happen is just turn on your mic and pop in and read one of them, and you all can just choose to do that.
LISD learners are empowered to be critical and creative thinkers who find and solve problems with curiosity, flexibility, and innovation.
LISD learners are empowered to be skilled communicators and collaborators who actively listen and express ideas with respect and empathy while owning their individual roles toward a shared outcome.
LISD learners are empowered to be compassionate community contributors who value diverse perspectives and share their unique gifts with the world.
LISD learners are empowered to be adaptable and reflective individuals who confidently embrace their strengths and challenges while pursuing their interests and passions.
Thank you. So what we'd like to do now is engage you in a protocol. This is called a Critical Friends Protocol, and this is something we use a lot at our executive team level when we're preparing to have our instructional leadership meetings with our campus and district leaders to get feedback and make it even better. So it's pretty simple. The hardest part is, well, so what you're going to do is we're going to give you a second to just engage with this again on your own and jot some notes down about what you like about it, what you wonder, and suggested potential next steps. So just jot down what you like, maybe something that you're wondering, and next steps. And then we're going to just have a process of sharing out some of those. So I'll be quiet now so you can take about a minute to do that. Okay, so what we're going to start with is some things that you like. And you'll just popcorn those out. And Jennifer Collins is taking notes for us and capturing all this. What I was going to say earlier, and I stopped myself. The hardest part of this is that we're not going to have a dialogue about it right now. It's really just getting your feedback. So you're just going to share what you like. And that's the hardest thing for us not to say, oh, we like that too. Or yeah, that came up and we did talk about it and, you know. So it's really just a protocol we're really going to try to follow with you just sharing what, some different things you like. We'll take notes and then we'll switch to I wonder and then next steps. So just popcorn out, things that you like.
So I really loved that each one is, is individual and yet they're all cohesive. They, they go together, but they all kind of stand on their own, if that makes sense.
I was fortunate to send in at least three of these meetings. And I am just, I got to see it from the beginning till now. So I'm, I really like everything here. I mean, my third meeting, they knew I was like a big fan already, just to hear the conversations, what it came from to what it's now. But one thing that I catch in my eye is especially with a COVID year and the snow and everything else, the adaptable and reflective individuals. I think our students are very adaptable when they need to be. So for me, right there, I see that and I'm just like, that's right, they are. Our kids are very resilient. So I really like that. And y'all know me, compassionate community contributors. I just, that's my jam. I, I love that we have this as part of this LISD learners' profile content. So thank y'all so much.
I really like the overlap between our core beliefs and the graduate profile, especially the parts about the deliberate and intentional focus on relevant deeper learning for each student will optimize individual outcomes and personal growth. And I see that reflected in here in the thing, I, in the graduate profile. I like that we have the word communicators in there. I think communication is such a powerful, powerful component. So I'm so glad that it is definitely out there front and center. I also look at this and see soft skills for the future, which makes me think of our workforce and how, I mean, you need these things. You need to be critical and creative thinkers. You need to be able to work and have strong communication and collaboration. So these are all really powerful words and concepts in my mind. So there's a lot I like.
Trish took two of mine, so.
I, I'm, I like it all. You know, really, as I read it, I kept thinking about the, these core, these core beliefs and how I, so much of that was interlaced through there, right? I could see that in there. And, and then also what Christine said is there are four very strong individual statements that all really come together and are cohesive together. So I think it's great.
Quite honestly, I like that empowered statement at the top and overarching. That, that is something that certainly is important to me and, and I believe the rest of the board as well, empowering our students.
Any other I likes before we go to I wonder? Just want to make sure. All right, what are some things that you are wondering that we can capture to take back to our team?
So looking through all of these, we have words, respect and empathy, diverse perspectives, embrace strengths and challenges. And those words mean different things to different people. So I'm, I'm struggling a bit with what in our student or our graduate profile. Once again, quote Brene Brown, paint done. What, what does done look like in terms of have we hit the mark for respect and empathy and diverse perspectives and strengths and challenges?
I would be, I love this piece though, but I'm just wondering when you say unique gifts, is that just a nice way of saying our differences? Like, I'm looking at it from a special education lens. And so for me, I'm like, that's not what we call my child's disability. So I'm just curious, like, what does that look like? And then what defines skilled communications, communicators? Because we have students that have speech impediment, that have problems communicating. So what does that look like to that child who sees this? How are we going to be able to explain to that child, like, you know, not to take it literally? That's what I'm looking at.
So my wonder is, it's funny, when I read it the first time, it was like, I really felt like the definition of who find and solve problems with curiosity, flexibility, and innovation, like to me, that goes under adaptable and reflective individuals. And so I was just kind of, thought that was a little twist on what our intentions were, maybe? I don't know. So that's my I wonder.
You pushed your button first. I was deferring to you. I guess I have a couple of wonders. The first is I, as I look at these, I start thinking about how do we ladder measurables or what we're going to track or what they drive in our system beyond just aspirational statements, right? And for me, the first two seem more susceptible to those kinds of ladders. The second two, I have a harder time with. The, the fourth, the resilience, I think, is really important. But I, I'm not sure where it goes. And I, I start to wonder if three and four aren't just character traits that are part of a bigger concept of character. They're, they're important, don't get me wrong. I don't disagree with those statements. I just wonder if they, I, I wonder if there's a disservice to other very virtuous character traits that could be part of a system of character goals or expectations. And then for me, the second wonder is, we talked a little bit about CCMR and adulting in our conversation here. And so I wonder where that went because I'm not sure that I see it here.
For me, I wonder is in the word LISD leader, learners are empowered. And I really have a lot of wonderings around the word empowered. And so I kind of got on a flow of thought, a brain flow here. So forgive me because it's, it's a lot of different thoughts. But it's what do we as a district think it means to empower the students? What do we as a board trustees are going to think we mean? For me, what I'm thinking, what I'm seeing empowered is, did we as a board provide the resources? Did we provide the support that was needed? Did we give adequate resources? Do we have oversight of areas that provided the support to actually empower this? And then that also requires us as a board to be actively engaged and understand what is needing to be in that empowered so we know if we did it or not.
Any other I wonders? This is great feedback. So the last is for you to share any suggested next steps that we might want to take back to our core team.
I want to expand a bit on empower, on my wondering there. Because one of the things I was thinking about was the listening sessions that we held that led up to this. And I remember we, Alexis, you had mentioned something that had kind of stood out to you. And I was wondering if that ties into that empowerment portion a bit of, are we doing this? Yeah, I think that goes back to, you're exactly right. Thank you. When we heard from parents who, especially those transitional years that are so important and we, we tell students, okay, go make your selections and it's done in a classroom setting. And we don't inform parents like what's happening. They don't understand the magnitude of those choices. And so how are we bridging those gaps and having parents alongside in that process to have those transitional years kind of open houses or things that I've mentioned before? However, we phrase it, marry it, package it. But, you know, just really inviting at that child's transitional level, you know, mirroring what is still necessary for the parent involvement and, and how to engage that growth so that they do find their passion and they do find the right, the right choices in their curriculum.
Board members, anything else? Next, next steps, exactly what are you asking for when you're thinking about next steps from, from us? So just any suggestions you have for us to take back to the team regarding this process? Things we might want to consider or think about? I mean, already you gave us some I wonders that we'll take back. But is there any other, anything else just regarding next step? And that could be that can you bring this back in March? Or can you put it in a board memo or just, you know, anything you're thinking about regarding this process?
Yeah, I'm seeing some head nods. We would like you to kind of bring it back, especially this, this empowered part, the I wonders that we've all kind of issued out, just to kind of follow up and how this is continuing in the process would be great. I think a board memo is fine for some of it for minor updates, but I would like to see it's come back before as an agenda item before things start rolling out.
Sounds great. Sarah, we're almost done. Here's a couple more slides. Do you want to just share a little bit about the three papers that we added over there? And y'all might, could peruse that when you're, during a break or something.
So we just added to your chart there some of the sort of prototypes, I guess, that have come out through our discussions, just so that you can see the process. We are also collecting all of this and we'll have it, it's going to be posted so that you can, you already have it on that one document where you can click in, but to try to make it a little clearer, to see the evolution that goes, that has gone on. You can see sort of the three levels of sort of where we've come. I do have to commend the group, the core team as well as the design team. The level of conversation has been amazing. And I have to say that most of what you all have brought up, but not all, have been already deeply discussed and will continue to be discussed as we continue to refine this. We again, do believe that this, it's very important to get this right. And the next step is, or the big next step for us is to really figure out how will we measure this? How can we develop a whole framework and then integrate it into all that we're doing here in Leander ISD? The timeline, you can see we are at the end of our timeline, which is what we had established back in the beginning of January. And so it's kind of nice to see that we're getting pretty close. We are going to take your feedback from this evening back to the, the core team. We're going to continue to meet weekly until spring break. And the design team will meet again as well. And we do hope to have something that is semifinal for you, for your March meeting. That yellow there is the, what are they calling it?
Snow vid.
Snow vid, hashtag snow vid of last week. So clearly the work that we had planned with D-Wick got postponed. But we will circle back with D-Wick. And we also just launched another round of student feedback where we're asking, there have been some volunteers to take this to students of all different grade levels and get them to start making it into their own language and to give us some really direct feedback about whether or not these are the things that are resonating with them.
So I have a quick question, well, comment and then a question, then comment. Question first, Brave Space Commitments, where, where did this come from?
So this was part of our cabinet retreat we had this summer as we were coming together as a cabinet team of about 16 people, really thinking about what's going to help drive us in our work. And we started with some Brave Space Commitments and then we tweaked those. And we've used those now in all of our cabinet meetings just as an anchor document to really help us and guide us as we're knowing we're doing big, important work and hard conversations, et cetera.
That is a perfect answer for what I'm about to say then. You all have done a lot of work and had a lot of conversations. And then you ask for us to give feedback and input. And sometimes it may be received as we've taken all of your good work and just said, yeah, that's great, start over. So I'm going to go to one of these Brave Space Commitments and speak on my behalf only. Assume positive intentions and take responsibility for impact. Maintain a growth mindset and give individuals an opportunity to address their blind spots. If a team member is negatively affected by someone, they should share that and know that the speaker would be willing to own that impact. Everyone in the group is expected to listen to feedback about how their statements are being received. So I, I want to be mindful of that particular Brave Space Commitment. Y'all have done great work. The, the areas that we see that we have, the I wonders, for me, is not in any way saying what you've done is, is invalid. It's really good stuff. The, the fact that I, I want to have these questions about respect and empathy and diverse perspectives means that I'm, I'm fully invested in this. So I just want to make sure that you don't take away from this that we were going, yeah, nice try, let's do it again. It is good work.
Thank you so much for saying that. And honestly, that is exactly what we want. We are, we don't want to bring this to you in March and go, hey, look what we've created for you. Because this is a, this is truly a collaborative effort. And we need all the voices. And your voices are, are important, as are the voices of our students and many of our staff, all of our staff. And so that's, that's why we have engaged in such a wide-ranging kind of iterative process where we're, where we're just really trying to gather the information. And, and we have learned to take it all in and, and take it right back then to the team and let us struggle with it. Because the wonderings that you have are, are very valid and, and important for us to be thinking about. Because again, this, it's more important that we get this right than fast, right?
Next steps is our last slide. And basically you can see here that we're continuing to refine the content of this prototype. And then we will be really launching the graphic design. And that won't be until we land on getting the content right. We will then really think about the process. How are we going to make this come alive in our system? And that's, that's going to be the hardest part, you know, in a system the size that we have. But we will have a systematic plan to do that. And then we'll be getting feedback from you all along the way. So that's all we have this evening. Any questions? Board members, anything else? All right. Thank you all so much. Board members, we do have some guest speakers here this evening. So with your permission, we'll do one more agenda item. We're going to take it out of order. We're going to bring up 8B1, Under Governance, the Legislative Update. So you have a presentation. And then once that presentation is done, we'll take a break. Not trying to rush y'all along on the presentation.
All right, can y'all hear me? I come bearing reinforcements tonight. So most of you know, I think all of you know, that I recently switched firms at the beginning of the year to Nsera Strategic Partners. And I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you to Jesse Nsera and let him tell you a little bit about his, his history and his background.
Would you?
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
For the record, Jesse Onseda, partner with Nsera Strategic Partners. I'm glad to have Colby on my team. A little bit about my background and then I can touch on some of the legislative issues. So I'm from Taylor, Texas, former school board president in Taylor. I served six years on the Taylor ISD Board of Trustees. Also a former mayor of Taylor, served on the mayor, I mean, I served on the Taylor Council for I think, six years as well. So, and I did those simultaneously while serving at the Capitol. I served eight years under Controller Strayhorn as her legislative person, her general counsel, her director of tax, and then ultimately her chief of staff. And then while I was on the council in Taylor, I served as a general counsel and chief of staff for Speaker Joe Strauss out of San Antonio. So in those years, and I also have, I've been around the Capitol since about 87. I tell you those things just to let you know that I've got a broad background at the Capitol in the legislative process, in the state revenue and economic development process. My local service has given me, as you know, a good, a good viewpoint and vantage point at local government, at tax rate setting, at all the things that you have to do as, as trustees. And I applaud you for your work. My, my wife is a retired principal, a teacher. And so I was telling on another call yesterday that I have, have been helping out with. And so I was telling on another call yesterday that I have, have been helping out with bus duty, cafeteria duty, picking up supplies, guarding cars when my wife worked at a certain district. And so, which I won't name, but, so I, I have been around the process. And I also can appreciate the role of the public and of constituents. And I can appreciate the role that you have in working with your partners in the community. So your, your city council, your county judges, your state reps, state senator and, and other, and your business community as well, your chamber community. So glad to partner with, with Colby. And I'll turn it back over and get on with the presentation.
And, and he didn't, he neglected to mention one piece of experience that I think is the coolest piece. And he's a former FBI agent as well, so.
Thank you, thank you.
I can't, I can't lie to him. He sees right through it. So we kind of want to start by just talking about the tenor of the, the session, which is dramatically changed in just one week's time, right? And so I kind of wanted Jesse to, to touch on that. As being a former chief, he, he picks up on the emotions of session quicker maybe than anyone and how the members react.
Sure. So if I were here six months ago or nine months ago, I'd have given you one presentation. If I'd have come here a month, a month before session, I would have given you a different presentation. Here we are today, I'd give you a third presentation. It just changed that rapidly. You know, the normal issues that you'll see at session are obviously the budget. You know, there's tax issues, there's cleanup to HB3, there's cleanup to Senate Bill 2 from last session. There's all the bills that each representative wants to pass for their district. There's obviously on the, with COVID still underway, there's a lot of COVID related issues that you would expect to be addressed. There's the emergency management issues that you expect to be addressed. You know, who, who is responsible? Who can declare an emergency? What's your authority at the local level versus the state level? How do we get the economy back and running? And then you have your traditional issues that are there year round and every session. You know, there's transportation issues, there's water issues, there's parks funding issues. There's, and you know, all the health and human services issues. So all those are still there. But with the storm that happened last week, everything's been turned upside down now. I spent all day listening to the House joint hearing on the, the storm from last week. And it's still underway. I listened to it all the way up here from Taylor. And in just listening to all the changes that need to occur to address what happened during last week's horrific situation, it's going to take more time than we have this session. And so I see them tackling that issue, or at least attempting to. And I don't think they can do everything they need to do. I see them attacking, and I use attacking respectfully, sorry, you know, the, the COVID related issues. And that's everything from your jurisdiction to the city's jurisdiction, to again, disaster declaration and authority. I see them addressing those issues. And then you have issues that come into play because members have to get reelected, right? So you'll see issues that are, the far left is going to push. And you have issues that the far right is going to push. Things that would impact your, your, you know, your, your debt issuances and elections, trying to make elections a little more challenging to issue debt, more transparency issues. And so I, I think you're going to see all this that we didn't expect is now happening before us. It's unfolding. The, a bit of, two facts here. In 2019, there were about 7,500 bills filed and only 1,400 of those passed. And so we're now here just upon March, just about. And they've yet to have organizational meetings, other than the meetings appropriation and finance has been meeting. The budget's going to get done, but they haven't even had their organizational meetings yet. And so they're probably a good two to almost three weeks behind already. And what we've picked up also, Colby and I, through our, our meetings, is the Senate in particular is taking a slow and deliberate pace. And they will not be having many committee hearings. The House is probably going to have a few more, but at some point, we're going to have, we're going to have a struggle between the two chambers as to the slow pace versus the fast pace. I don't expect, we'll probably have a good number of bills filed. I don't remember how many have been filed this week, but it's, it's going to be in the thousands. But the number passed is going to be far less than the 1,400 that were passed last session. And redistricting, you probably, I'm sure you've heard about that. That's now being pushed into the fall. And so that's, while that was going to be a dominant issue this session, it's still there. But now it's been pushed aside because of the storm relief and on all those efforts. So I, I think members are, they're focused right now on what happened last week. But I think that as we get into next week and the week after, and they start to look at the calendar and they start to look at where they are in the process, things are already backing up. And so they're going to have to really prioritize both houses and members on which bills are going to push. And so that will impact the public education community quite a bit. And Colby can talk a little bit more about some of the specifics. But we're, we're in a unique spot and a, the most challenging spot in, in all my years of working around the Capitol. They'll get some things done, but there's a lot that they will not get done.
Thank you, Jesse. And Jesse kind of touched on it about the committees. And we do have a public education committee hearing posted for next Tuesday now, an organizational meeting. And we have a new chair. We have Harold Dutton, Democrat out of Houston, and a bit of a surprise. I think a lot of folks were surprised that a Democrat is going to lead the public ed committee. It's the first time since Sadler, I suppose, in the, in the 90s. And so you've got Harold Dutton, J M Lozano is the vice chair, Alma Allen, Steve Allison, Keith Bell, Diego Bernal, Brad Buckley, Mary Gonzalez, Dan Huberty, Kim King, Terry Mesa, James Talarico, and Gary Van Dever. So all in all, I mean, a lot of the committee members were on the committee last time. There's, there's a couple of new ones. And Brad Buckley, his wife is an administrator in Colleen. You still have some, some real good members that have real world education experience, like Talarico, like Gary Van Dever, like Alma Allen. Steve Allison, Keith Bell are, and Dan Huberty are all former board presidents. So still a good committee, but you know, new and different. And so we'll see how that goes. Appropriations, we have a new chair, Dr. Greg Bonin out of the Houston area, League City actually, and a new vice chair, and that's Mary Gonzalez, who again, you already heard her name. She's also on public ed. And then they've named subcommittees and we should all be happy as Leander ISD folks that Terry Wilson is going to be the Article III Subcommittee Chair. So that's important for Leander ISD. And they actually held their first hearing today and got some of the introductory stuff out of the way. Some of the other chairs that I wanted to mention, significant appointments, elections, Brisco Kane, calendars, Dustin Burrows, and redistricting, Todd Hunter, and state affairs, Chris Petty. One of the things that the speaker set out to do when he named committees was he wanted to name one of the most diverse stable of committees that have ever been named in the Texas House. And so he had five committee chairs and 14 vice chairs that are women. 14 chairs and 21 vice chairs are either black, Hispanic, or Asian American. And so that's one of the most diverse committee appointments that we've seen in quite some time. So I, I wanted to talk about sort of the big issues. And Jesse's talked about this some, but obviously the budget is, is still a massive issue. As we talked about last time, there's a $7 billion difference in the, in the base bill and the revenue estimate. And we'll talk a little bit about the federal money and what we're hearing on that. The hold harmless issue is still going. We're still waiting to hear, and again, I'll talk a little more about that issue as well. But you know, I think there's a lot of us that thought that this would be wrapped up by now, but it hasn't happened. House Bill 3 cleanup, we still hear that that bill, both on the Senate and House side, is coming to fix some of the unintended consequences of House Bill 3. Virtual education is becoming a massive topic. And I think there's a lot of movement in both chambers to get a bill off the ground. And I can tell you from my work with some of my other clients that they are indeed, both chambers are indeed very serious about that initiative. The digital divide, broadband, which came in as one of the bigger topics. It's still a massive topic. But as Jesse has pointed out, you know, what happened last week has really sucked the wind out of a lot of our big topics that we were originally talking about. But there was a, a big bill filed today, House Bill 5 by Trent Ashby, that will hopefully help with the digital divide. The community censorship legislation, as some call it, or the taxpayer funded lobbying, no matter how you phrase it, that is still alive and well. And something that we're seeing some, some movement on. Maz Middleton, the author, is still gathering signatures. And this is something again, that will probably flow through the State Affairs Committee like it did last time. And so we'll see, you know, as we move throughout the process, if this is a bill that indeed gets the priority stamp from the speaker and the lieutenant governor. And in fact, it already has from the lieutenant governor. It was one of his priorities that he set out this week.
Colby, with our legislative priorities, how do you feel that we're sitting during legislative session with the priorities we laid out as a board?
With our specific priorities? You know, they fit in pretty well with a few different things. So specifically, and I, I will give you a little bit of an update. So on the special education bill, I talked to the legislative council drafter this week. And representative, we've talked about this, Representative Bucy plans to file that bill, but ledge council is very backed up. But the drafter called me this week, she had a bunch of questions. I think we worked through those, so hopefully we will be getting that back very soon. And you know, all we're waiting on, on several of these initiatives is just to have language done so that we can have a hearing request and hopefully get a hearing as quickly as possible. As Jesse mentioned, we have heard that on the Senate side, that for the education committee specifically, that they're looking at three to four hearings, period. That's it. And so that's a, that's a very different setting than what we're used to. On the fast growth allotment, there's language that's being floated right now through the Fast Growth School Coalition. We are waiting to see if we can get that language filed. We're hoping that they will put that in the House Bill 3 cleanup. And that would help Leander immensely based on the figures that your CFO, Elaine, has provided and Dr. Gearing. The data that I've seen back from if the language that we've proposed is implemented is that essentially the way it's worked out right now, my understanding is y'all are losing a substantial amount of money, potentially based on the estimates. If our language is implemented, then you would not lose any money, is the data that I've seen. So hopefully we can get some traction on that. But like I said, we're still waiting on the language to get finalized. Student data privacy, actually had a long discussion with Gary Van Dever's office about that bill today. They are planning to get the hearing request in ASAP. They're drafting it as we speak. And so hopefully, after we have this initial public ed hearing, we will hear some bills. I think it got, actually I think it got referred today. And so we're going to have a continued dialogue with the Senate on that because that's where we got held up last time. We've had lots of conversations already. And I feel like we're in a better place this go around. And some of you may have seen that Chairwoman Nelson filed a bill that is not related to ours, but is somewhat similar. And she's concerned about state agencies selling personal data of, of taxpayers. And so they filed a bill, I believe that was two days ago. And so our hope is, is that, you know, that sort of interest will be garnered on our bill as well. I mean, we, we are trying to protect the most innocent parties of all. So hopefully we will be able to get some traction on that.
Colby, quick question. Thus far, has there, have you heard anything related to elevating educators to the same legal status as other first responders? And where I'm going with that is during the COVID pandemic, there was certainly a lot of interest to get our teachers back into classrooms so that our kiddos could be back in the classrooms, so that our parents could get back to work. That, that's difficult to do when teachers have to worry about contracting the coronavirus, not only impacting the students, but impacting their own families. And with the vital role that teachers play in society and educating our children, little personal opinion here, but it, it's high time that, that our educators get recognized as the same priority as other first responders. Have you heard anything about that?
I've heard several individual legislators make that exact statement. And in fact, I believe Chairman Dutton made that statement today in his Tribune interview. But outside of that, as far as leadership goes, I have not heard the same sort of forceful statement. Jesse, have you heard anything different?
I would concur with Colby's comments.
Yeah.
So a follow up question to that. Is there, is there any real benefit that you would see for our community and our teachers and interested individuals to start making noise with their individual representatives to, hey, we, we really need to look at this?
Absolutely. And I don't know, you know, you all can enlighten me if, on the Central Texas School Board Association, if they've made any moves on, on this. But you know, to me, it would be appropriate for trustees to be asking for these sorts of things on behalf of their staff and administration, most of all, probably. But then also, yes, the individual staff members, the administration, the parents. I think everybody has to make this request of their, their legislators to get that ball rolling.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. One thing that's not necessarily on your priority list, but I visited with Dr. Gearing about, is this idea of virtual education. Jesse and I both have been very involved on behalf of other clients, trying to set that bill out in, in a way that would make an idea like yours successful with a new campus. And so that's, again, you know, this is one of those things we talked about at the beginning, right? It doesn't fall into your priorities, but it's something you're working on. And so we'll, I will tell you that Leander has been mentioned several times as an example of the kind of thing that we're trying to do and trying to accomplish in a, in a smart way. Also, you've been mentioned several times on the hold harmless piece because of some data that Dr. Gearing and Elaine were able to get me about the amount that, you know, while you won't necessarily be losing it this year, what you would have to do with fund balance, what, what you would have to do with staff. And that's been vital in my ability to share a story with legislators, which I think is the most important thing because, you know, these folks see numbers all day. But until they see the practical impact, it doesn't mean a whole lot. So that's, that's been wonderful. And you will continue to be involved in the conversation on both those items, as long as I'm involved, I guess. So you know, one thing that we've talked about in the past, and I want to bring up again, is the possibility of having a committee of board members. Because we're, although it's a strange session, we're still moving down the road. And I foresee us getting to the point where we have the hustle and bustle, where it's, it's very difficult for us to have the, the sort of interaction we need to have if I'm having trouble interpreting something, whether it falls within your priorities or not. And so I would, you know, ask if it's the will of the board, that if we could put together a, a committee of three board members to maybe, you know, allow us to have that opportunity to have that dialogue, you know, in crunch time, so to speak, that would, I think that would help me a lot. And obviously that doesn't absolve me from coming back here and updating you and doing the things that we, we normally do. But that would be at times that, you know, we have a month in between we meet, so.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, I love that idea as the only board member who's not on a committee. No, I, I, Trish knows this, this is, I feel like we are so close to the Capitol. And y'all know the power to be able to have testimony from a board member, from a parent, is more impactful than you going up there and telling our story. So I think we need to use every advantage that we can. We're 30 miles away, I think, 30 minutes. And I, I would support this if the board is totally on board with it. And I would love to serve on this committee.
I was going to say that, that is, that is right in Anna's wheelhouse. I, I too would like to serve on that committee if able, if for no other reason than to support Anna and watch her go to work.
Well, Colby, let's find out bef, I appreciate volunteers. Yes, we're, I think you have a very engaged board. We're here, we want to help. Tell us though, what you're thinking of as far as time commitment or what does that look like? Because I think you're probably going to need some really quick responses, short turnaround. And so. and so who's ever volunteering for this needs to be able to draw at a hat. So I want to make sure we can meet whatever your expectations are. I remember I was listening to one of the hearings, and Maras said something, and I texted Colby, I was like, wow, he said something about digital, and Colby was listening, right? I mean, he's there, he's listening, he's, I mean, and as Jesse Anzada said, they're still meeting tonight and, and still going strong, talking about the committee. So once we start going, this is going to be an all-hours-of-the-day type of thing. So as far as what you think, the kind of commitment, and then also, to clarify, this is, this is not for me to advocate for me, this is, or even really for me to advocate for CTSBA, I have to do that on my own time. It is, it is about advocating legislative priorities that Leander ISD Board has already adopted and staying within those guidelines.
That's correct. And to help me interpret, because as we've already noticed, not every bill will black and white match up with what's on your priorities, right? And so help me interpret what you, what you were thinking when we adopted the priorities. Does this fit within? Do you think that this is something that the board needs to weigh in on, and the district Time commitment, I think, you know, I would say that we probably would need to have a standard call once a week, but then, you know, after postings and having a little time to digest the bills that have been posted, you know, we could probably do sort of a non-call sort of situation. I don't think we would necessarily need to have a call every time, because a lot of times, I'm going to know where you're at based on your priorities, but it's only at the times that we have questions that it would be an issue. Jesse, do you have any suggestions?
No, I agree. I think this session with the, the pandemic and just the protocols that they have may change whether you need to drive into Austin or be available for a virtual witness participation. So we'll, we'll know that, and we'll get a feel for how the committees are going to operate. They'll have their, they'll start having their organizational meetings next week, and so we'll have a better feel.
One thing I did want to add, just to kind of give you an idea of the landscape on the virtual education piece and kind of what we're all up against is, you know, this would be a monumental shift in policy. So I want to lay that out there, first of all. We essentially have, I think it's six programs across the state that access the VSN that allow for full-time instruction. That's it right now. And so basically, what a bill would have to do is create the mechanism by which we, we are able to fund schools for full-time virtual students, and at the same time, have guardrails that enable, or prohibit, I should say, traditional ISDs from picking off other traditional ISD students, maintaining boundaries, maintaining boundaries for charters, keeping it public, those sorts of things. So obviously, just in those two, and there's, there's a whole other host of issues, as, as you, I'm sure none of you deal with UIL issues ever, but, you know, that becomes its own animal. But just those two big issues are a behemoth. And so that's what we're dealing with. I can tell you that in the past, dealing with this subject, this, some sort of bill like this has been filed the last two sessions, and both times, my clients that I represent, the extent of the engagement has been pretty much, no, not going to happen. But because of the pandemic, the toothpaste is out of the tube, right? And I think one representative probably said it best, and he said, you know, with telehealth, it's not like we're going to stop doing telehealth, right? We're going to continue to do telehealth. We're not going to force everyone to go back to the doctor in a brick and mortar. And I think Leander is just one of many, many districts that are asking for this change. And so that has persuaded a lot in the school community, and there's still a lot that aren't on board, but persuaded a lot in the school community to play ball and to try to make this happen. But I just wanted to, you all to know that this is a huge shift, it's going to take some time, and if you have thoughts, you need to be sharing it with your, your representatives. Because, like I said, I think we will have a bill in both chambers that, that makes it pretty far in the process. And so we need to, we need to lay out our expectations now.
Colby, that was a lot, thank you. Okay, so for tonight, and since we're approaching getting ready for a break, a couple of things. There is a Slack channel with legislative updates. Board members, we, we don't chat on that one, because it would be a quorum break, right? But we can get information. That's where Colby and SCR will be sending information to us, so we can see and read and absorb all this information. I am guessing, too, that a committee, it doesn't mean that all the other board members just get a pass. We, we are going to need to be active. It's going to end up being all of us needing to get engaged as we move, and Colby will, will let us know. For those of you who are interested, take some time, think about it, about serving on the committee, and then send Colby an email. Colby, let's try to do it, if y'all can, though, because things are moving. I get it, we're behind schedule, but things, I mean, it's still, once after usually spring break, you're meeting at all hours. So if you could please get Colby an email, maybe think about it over the weekend, at least before Monday, if you're interested. Colby, if you get more than four names, then let me know, and we'll figure out another thing, another way to go, or another, we'll put names in a hat or something. So, there you go.
Thank y'all so much.
Anything else?
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you very much, Jesse, for coming this evening.
Sure, thank you.
And Colby, it's good to see you again.
Yeah.
All right, thank y'all so much. Board members, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. It's 8:03, we'll return at 8:13.[1004.32]
Did I say we'd start now? It's 8:14, and we're gonna call this meeting back to order so we can get done at a good time this evening. We're gonna go back up into our discussion items. Under Student Experience, and we left off, we had just concluded before we jumped around, we had concluded the Graduate Profile Design Team update, and we're moving next into now the discussion of Community-Based Accountability in Leander ISD. Matt Benz and Kendra Wines, look at there, you're there and ready for us.
Still working on that. Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. Great discussion and great presentation and great work by members of our of our community and our stakeholders on the graduate profile. I think some of the questions you had were great, and I think we'll start answering some of them with this presentation this evening. So, the purpose of this presentation is to define in very basic, concrete terms what community-based accountability means in the context of Leander ISD. We'll look at how it aligns, and in fact, we'll be driven by the current work, and then we'll look at next steps for getting you all involved and kind of continuing that conversation that you were having with your wonderings about the graduate profile in relation to how we can set up some ways to hold ourselves accountable. So, first thing we need to do is clarify or provide some clarity about state accountability and how it relates to community-based accountability. We're all familiar with the state accountability system. You know, campuses and districts are an A through F grade based on these three areas: student achievement, overall student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. The data set that is primarily used for state accountability is the STAR test, with the exception of College Career Military Readiness Criteria. And I'm gonna make a statement now, and I want to make sure everybody hears it, and people who are public streaming or the public who's streaming at home hears it as well, and I'm gonna make sure I say it word for word. In Leander ISD, we recognize the importance of state accountability. We believe that it is vital that our students do well on the STAR test. Our schools and our district must and will continue to perform well and receive high state accountability ratings. The introduction of the community-based accountability system or idea into Leander ISD is not and never will take the place of or be in opposition to state accountability. State accountability continues to be a focus priority and is an important part of a comprehensive Leander ISD community-based accountability system. So, I'm gonna show you a couple of examples of how they align. So, I copied some slides from TEA's presentation on state accountability and some of the discussions they've had about the foundational beliefs underpinning state accountability. So, the first, one of the first slides in the presentation was Expectations Matter. And TEA, the representative, talked about the belief that all students can learn and achieve at high levels. Absolutely, we definitely agree with that. And by the way, there's no slide where we get to where we say we disagree. So, don't worry, there's no, just a little teaser, that's not, that's not a part of this presentation, and it won't be. Second slide that really jumped out for me was the idea, whoop, I went, I think I went ahead one, nope, that was Expectations Matter. This one is that expectations matter, and setting specific expectations for learning at each grade level are important. And as we all know, the State Board of Education has established the state standards, the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, the TEACs, and we recognize and agree with the importance of establishing these learning expectations. And we here at Leander ISD will ensure that teaching and learning in our schools continues to be executed in accordance with the state standards. Final slide about state accountability before we move on is just that idea that clear performance information, data helps students and helps us. I was looking at this statement that they have on the slide, and it's actually a quote from Peter Drucker, who is a kind of leader in the business world and talks about leadership in the business world, and he talks about the idea that you can't improve what you can't see. And I know I've had conversations with some of the members of the Board before this, talking about that, and that idea that organizations demonstrate what they care about, and they demonstrate that by measuring, right? So, I'm not saying that well, but they demonstrate their priorities by what they measure and what they keep track of. So, we're gonna talk more about that in a minute, but to keep this rolling, Kendra is going to engage you all in a short but interesting activity that I think will set us up in a mindset to talk about the last few slides. This is a fairly brief presentation. Hopefully that won't come as too much of a disappointment.
So, we want to start setting the framework around this and get us to start thinking, what are we talking about when we're talking about a community-based accountability system? We've already done a lot of work towards it. You'll find in your folder a sheet that looks like this called the Directional Framework Exercise, and I'm gonna ask a few questions. So, the first thing I want you to do is notice the 1 through 5 on this side, and I'm gonna ask you the questions. You're just gonna brainstorm and fill in one answer per column 1 through 5 on this column. First question is, why do we educate kids? Why do we educate kids?
This goes in column 1.
Column, yeah, just, you can think of five different, brainstorm five different reasons we educate kids. Just 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. This is gonna be your own work to share, we're not gonna share it, so you can put your own ideas in there.
Just wanna know how well I should spell.
That's what I'm saying, you just, you can chicken scratch if you'll be able to explain what you meant there.
I can shortcut, thank you.
Right.
I was gonna say we're not gonna turn them in, but I think we might collect them so we can use them at the next meeting.
We're gonna use them the next meeting, but I mean, we're not gonna take them.
But we're not gonna enter it into public record or anything.
So, it doesn't have to be every reason, just try to come up with the first five that come to your mind. Okay, as you're completing that list, I'd like you to share one or two. You don't, not everyone has to go through all five, but if you could just kind of share out to our community, what is it you're thinking about why we educate our students?
I'll kick it off. To prepare students for their place in the world.
Thank you. Another one?
So, future generations that can lead the country, and then servant leadership was my other one.
Great.
To have a well-rounded and productive member of society.
Great. That was yours, Anna? Oh, she stole that.
I like Christine's, I wanna change my answer.
You can add that to the bottom.
I started off with, in my shorthand, and it just said, "So they can adult," after, after.
Adulting is important, we know that, right? Okay, so that's great. The next thing I want you to do is see at the bottom, right here with the 1 and 2, in our current state accountability system, how do we, how are we showing measurements? How do we show measurements? So, I'll give you a hint, test scores, right? That's one way that we show measurement. What else is measured in our state accountability system?
I'm gonna make this too hard. So, it doesn't have to be the measurement of how we're measuring the things we picked, the next one is just measurements in general.
Just in our current reality, how is success measured?
So, like, test scores, we use that as a measurement of success of students, correct? So, that would be an example.
And how do you measure, or how do I measure?
Right, what?
Is that how y'all, how the district measures?
No, how does our state accountability system measure?
Your opinion.
Mm-hmm. Anybody wanna share out, or just a couple? How do we measure in our state accountability system?
Graduation rates.
Thank you, perfect. Graduation rates is one of our measurements.
Attendance.
Attendance, okay, great. So, that just kind of gives you an idea of what our state accountability measures. You came up with things that you wanna see and why we educate students. The next column, right next to your list of 1 through 5, I want you to decide, can you measure it easily? So, one of you said be able to adult, right? Adulting, is that easy to, is that easy to measure?
Just a yes or a no.
It could be a Y or an N.
Yep.
Yes or no?
But which column do you want that in? Sorry, the second column?
Yes, the second column, so this one right here, right here, yes or no? Are these, are these characteristics and things that you wanna see about why we educate for students, why we educate students? Is it easily measured? Yes or no? A Y or an N?
I messed up my sheet, but nobody will know.
Okay, then the next column, right next to that one, again, you can just say a yes or a no. Are these included in our current state accountability system? Y or N? Yes or no? So, what I'd like to see or hear from you now is, what were some of your ahas, wonderings? What did you come up with? What do you see? What does this tell you?
For me, several of the whys are long game, and so, you know, the measurements that we have even over an academic career are relatively short game, and many of them are also societal or community-oriented, global even, as opposed to individual.
Mm-hmm, great. For me, it was, the things that I chose were more soft skills, nothing you could necessarily measure by a score.
Hmm, interesting.
And mine wasn't necessarily soft skills, but same thing, to prepare students for their place in the world, how do you measure that? What do you measure that against? To create tomorrow's leaders, what's a measurement of who's gonna lead? To secure our nation's prominence in the world, how do you measure that? Next generation of innovators, what does that look like, and how do you assign an A through F grade to that? And then, the only one that we actually can have some degree of measurement over is to ensure that all students have equal opportunity. That is something that we can measure, but four out of my five were a little bit nebulous.
Okay, so, thank you for going through that exercise with us. We're gonna go into the next, and hopefully we can look at how this leads some of our connections that we're gonna make to community-based accountability system. We are going to let Donna take these up, because we're gonna fill out the last column at the next meeting, when we start talking about leading and lagging measures, and what Erin was talking about, looking forward, and what are those things that are long-term measurements, and what are things that we can do as we're moving through the system? So, we're gonna hold on to those, we'll collect them to give to Donna, just to give you, you might wanna put your name on the top, just so we can get them back to you, and we'll use that.
All right, so, what's the point, right? So, here's the point. How will we tell our story? State accountability, as you put that down at the bottom of your list, some of the ways we do that, Jim mentioned graduation rates, and we talked about attendance a little bit. State accountability is absolutely an important part of the Leander story, but it is not the whole story. So, what is the rest of the story? Just give a little shout out to the late Paul Harvey, I've always wanted to say that in a public forum. What is, so what is our Leander ISD story? So, we've been engaged, we've been taking steps to answer that question over the last year and a half. You had a little bit of a conversation about it today. We've engaged in the work of determining what is important to our community. Remember, it seems like so long ago, but it's been continuous with listening sessions, but going back to our community conversations and our equity forums, feedback that we've gathered from our community members has been incredibly insightful, looking into, you know, as far as understanding what the hopes and dreams of our parents are for their students. We've engaged in discussions and work to determine what's important to us. We now have a clear, and I would say, very courageous set of core beliefs that we can get behind, that we can rally around, and that we can use as a foundation for our work moving forward. And lastly, you just heard an update, it was almost a perfect transition, except for Colby in the middle, but that was an important, important presentation as well, but from an amazing group of people working on taking all that feedback, talking about it, gathering it all together, and look to figure out how we reimagine our graduate profile, that is what the community and our parents can expect from us during an academic career in Leander ISD. What, you know, what is our promise to our community? So, why is all this relevant in creating the context for community accountability? As we're all figuring out what we believe, what we hold dear, what our, what our promise is to our community, establishing those deliverables, we have to ask ourselves, and you all, y'all have already started to ask yourselves and ask us, how do we tell this part of the story? Just like, you know, Peter Drucker pointed out, how will we see it so that we can improve it? What does success look like? What evidence will we use, and what will, what evidence will we collect to demonstrate the degree of success or progress that we are making towards fulfilling our promises? How will we measure it? That was exact, you know, it was such great insights already, leading into the work that's gonna go on moving forward, looking at things from the graduate profile, looking at the things you listed on that sheet in the activity a moment ago, how do, what kind of evidence would we provide to demonstrate progress towards one of those goals in second grade, in third grade, in 11th grade, as a graduate? How will we measure those things? That is the premise for community-based accountability in Leander ISD. State accountability helps us tell part of the story, this is about figuring out how we tell the whole story, and that's, that's the work that we're gonna continue to engage in. So, as, as we continue to figure out and can, and make sharper, bring into sharper focus what we, what's important to us, what we believe in, what our deliverables are for the community, what kinds of students, you know, what kinds of experiences we are promising to our students and our community, how will we track it? How will we know how we're doing? How will we make adjustments so that we can continue to improve and work to meet those, what someone called aspirational goals and soft skill goals that we've talked about? So, next steps, we're gonna come back at the next board meeting, Kendra and I, and we're gonna review the LISD work to date. Didn't think, we wanted to keep it short tonight, so just give you that, you know, kind of working definition of community-based accountability in Leander. We'll talk about the work that's happened prior to the pandemic, and then as we get started back up, and we'll take you through, we're gonna use a continuous improvement tool called the Lotus to start getting conversation going and discussions about what holding us accountable, holding ourselves accountable for some of these things might look like. And that is the end of the presentation.
Board members?
CTSBA started a conversation on local accountability, and right before the pandemic hit, it was actually March, CTSBA heard from John Tanner talk about community-based accountability, and some of our board members were there. And then, just last month, month before last, we heard from Dr. Vulin, and he talked about community-based accountability. What I can tell you, and board members saw it, there can be so many different types and variations of what a community-based accountability system looks like. So, just to give you a heads up, as y'all get ready to bring those presentations, the things I wonder, and that I'm noodling around, are how do we measure and show learning? How does it have that validity, reliability? And when we have something like happened where STAR wasn't a measurement that went out, and it's coming out now, but we know that it's gonna be, I get it, the one student who takes it, you might say that could be accurate data, but you, you don't weigh your whole system, right? Because it's gonna be different the way it comes out. So, how really do we wanna measure? And I just wanna see how we can be smarter too, because I'm not saying, oh, let's do a lot more testings or assessments, but how really are we measuring is, this is important. I think we've seen it, I mean, even, what UT's not even doing, the SAT scores. So, what learning looks like and how we show our community that tax dollars were So, what learning looks like and how we show our community that tax dollars were spent, their kiddos are getting the education they deserve, and we as a board can say, yes, we can put our stamp of approval on it. It's a tricky wicket, so I'm looking forward to seeing what y'all bring to us.
And I just want to add a final thought to that. Since the first time I heard about community-based accountability systems, I have been absolutely invested in it. I think that is just the future of preparing the next generation of leaders in our nation. But I go into that with a bit of a other goal as well, and that is to get us away from the enormous amount of effort and focus that we put on our students when it comes to the STAR test. I think we put so much pressure on our students to do well on the STAR, and we hear this all the time, teach to the test. Every student, we want them to have an individualized learning plan, but we're going to teach to a standardized test, and we put so much pressure on those students that I think we lose a lot of what they actually are capable of doing because they're under such enormous stress. If community-based accountability does one thing, I hope that it is shift focus away from the enormous pressure we put on our teachers and our students to do well on the STAR. We want them to do well, right? But the amount of pressure, especially given the last 12 months, at some point, we have, as the adults, we have to say enough is enough, and too much is too much for our students and our teachers.
I just, I just would like to have questions later, because I just want to see how this pertains to special education, so I'll be pinging y'all later.
Excellent point, Anna, so.
Looking forward to it.
Y'all actually might get some more questions. Board members, please, between now and then, if you have questions, please reach out. All right, thank you all very much. We'll move on next to the technology and instructional materials allotment review, early childhood. Look at this, we have Kendra Wainens and Matt Benz up to present again.
Actually, I think Matt's going to take a break, I'm not sure. I'm going to ask Sarah Walker, who is our early childhood, one of our early childhood coordinators that helps specialize in pre-K and curriculum. So, all questions, I will probably have my expert here answer, but we are here to really just go over. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an overview of the technology instructional materials allotment, which we call TEMA. Most of you have seen this process before, and we're going to make a recommendation for our early childhood and instructional materials for adoption. So just to give you an overview, I think you've seen this slide before, but this is where we had, we have now called TEMA, and that's the textbook and the technology funds that came together. TEA put it together and said, you can use these monies on instructional materials. And you'll see the definition below about what instructional materials actually is. So TEA comes out with proclamations, and this one is proclamation 2021, focused on pre-kindergarten. But I will say, in our district, we don't just look at kindergarten, we look at all of early childhood. So we are looking through adopting these materials with the lens of pre-kindergarten, early childhood, special education, really threes and fours. So, want you to know how much stakeholder involvement is included in this process. Of course, we start with a district-wide committee of teachers that come together and look at the materials and talk and form a group to review this information. We also then have vertical campus committees that work with their teachers on their campus. And then, of course, we use our DEWIC, our district-wide improvement, education improvement committee, and then also the citizens curriculum advisory committee. We take this information to them as well. It's a pretty lengthy process that we start way back in September. After we get the proclamation, we start holding meetings and start looking at materials and bringing in discussion, and continue to see, this is just one page of the process. Here's the second page of the process. And one thing I do want to mention about this is the teachers have actually been able to get the materials to pilot this year, to be adopted and then implemented. So it's nice that they're able to really try and use some of these materials so that when they're giving feedback, they have something to base it on. So, would like to share the goals that we were looking at when we started in this process. We want to make sure that we're maximizing our learning opportunities for all students. We want to align to the committee's beliefs on what we really feel about early childhood education and the high-quality component. We want to support our instructional model of play-based instruction, and of course, reinforce, and support and enhance, but not replace, the LISD written curriculum. So, just to give you an idea, we started off with about 14 publishers that TEA put out there for us to consider. From there, we had initial criteria that we wanted 100% of this to be aligned with our pre-kindergarten guidelines, and we wanted it available in both English and Spanish. Six publishers met that criteria from the 14. From there, we took the top two, and of course, we did have these people come in and present to us. We took those top two, and that's where we went into a little bit more depth on what do the materials look like, how are they using them in the classroom, to be able to give some more information on a rubric that we created to receive feedback. So, without further ado, the recommendation is Frog Street, and I would like to just highlight some of those things that the teachers felt like made this stand out among all of them. Definitely supports the district instructional model of learning through play. It has a social, emotional learning component and resource that it matches what we are already using in our early childhood programs, which is conscious discipline, and it's already embedded in those resources. It has authentic Spanish literacy instruction, and it's aligned to our already Gomez and Gomez model that we use in our classrooms. It has differentiation strategies for teachers on point-of-use. So, I know that we had a couple of board members go over and look at the materials and how excited we were to demonstrate how, right there at the teacher's fingertips, are ways to differentiate and make sure that you're reaching all learners. It also is informed by anti-bias education and cultural responsiveness strategies. Those are built into these resources.
Real quick.
Yes, absolutely.
Can we unpack that last statement, just for the benefit of myself and those in the community that may be listening or look at this at a later date? What do we mean by informed by anti-bias education with cultural responsiveness strategies?
Do you want to take them, sir?
Sure. So, in the guide provided by Frog Street, they have a section on cultural responsiveness, and they reference the work of Denman, Sparks, and Edwards from 2010. And they talk about how anti-bias education influenced the development of their cultural responsiveness strategies, and so they were looking at things that were particularly, sorry, they were looking at resources that, sorry, I'm going to look it up really quick because I don't want to get, I don't want to get it wrong.
Can I interrupt real quick? Jim, I can send you, they actually released a statement Frog Street in regards to this pre-K curriculum and what it means, and it's, apparently they received a perfect score, so I can send that over to you, because I had the same question when I was looking over.
Well, and I appreciate that, Anna. It's not so much for me, but I want to make sure that our community, before I'm going to vote for something and make it part of their curriculum, I want to make sure that our parents have all of the information that they need to respond appropriately.
Absolutely.
And I apologize, I did not mean to put anybody on the spot.
No, that's okay, she'll look that up. But one thing I do want to say is that we have had it on public display. That's partly what we have to do, is provide it for our public, and then we will have a public hearing for parents and community to provide any input on this particular publisher.
Right, and I know that, and I appreciate that. What I want to do in this moment is, once again, remind our public of where they can go, so that they have all of the information that they need to feel comfortable with the decisions that we're making on their behalf.
Great.
I found it, sorry, thank you for your patience. So, they talk about anti-bias education has four main goals, identity, diversity, justice, and action. And it says, it's important to keep these goals in mind when preparing lessons, teaching, and interacting with children. And so, this is, was informed by the work referenced in Denman, Sparks, and Edwards. And so, they use those to develop those cultural responsiveness strategies in the lessons right at the point-of-use so that they are, you're able to adjust your lessons and meet the needs of the learners in your specific classroom.
Awesome, and I appreciate that. And again, I apologize, I did not mean to put anybody on the spot.
No, that was great, I think we just wanted to make sure we had the specific language for you and our community.
Absolutely.
Kendra, that also brings up a point too, is that board members, you did get material on your desk, when was it? Alexis and I went over there and saw some, I'm sure other board members have seen it as well. But there are also information on your desk, and Frog Street was one of them, that y'all had a pamphlet on, and I have the Frog Street actually in my car, and it is just precious to be able to pull through there. Because when I read this, I mean, if the community does this, it just looks at this, I don't think you're going to understand how awesome the curriculum is. I think you would, you might misinterpret. Going looking at it was, I think, the best thing, so I'm glad that we had that up. I realize that the public can't always do that, but I'm glad that we offer that opportunity. Whether or not they take it is their choice, but I'm glad we did have that up. And I also noticed, we had other committees that were in it as well. Do we know how many of our public took advantage of that opportunity to go see it in person? We don't, okay.
We didn't have a way of tracking it because we set it up in a four-year, we do have it all COVID, you know, but we didn't have a sign-in or anything like that. So, there's really no way of knowing who all actually looked through those materials.
Well, it was tremendous, it was a great presentation and setup y'all had. It was also very well done. It was easy to see when you arrived, and you could wash your, puree out your hands or whatever sanitizer was, and go look at the materials and sanitize again. So, thank you. What I saw was tremendous, and I think, I also heard that the teachers, you said in your presentation, got to use this as well and proved it as well.
Yes.
And I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but having it available for our parents to travel somewhere to look at it is great if they have the means to travel. Where I'm more interested in is our economically disadvantaged and those that may not have the ability to travel to a particular place. So, I would be really interested if there was a way that we could get this on, if there's any video type of presentation that we can make available on our website, so those that don't have access to transportation but have access to the internet can at least take a look at this, because I think that's a key component. We need to make sure that we're engaging our most vulnerable populations.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, that's a great suggestion. And I just had one more comment on the bottom here, that it was comprehensive resources for both pre-K 3 and 4, which is great for scaffolding or for the next conversation that we're going to have. It does have that component embedded in it. And so then we get to the discussion, which we kind of already started, but opening it up to questions and comments.
I would personally like, you can do this in a Friday memo, y'all mentioned campuses were using it. I would love to know, like, some feedback from our staff, since they're in the midst of it now, especially with it being a COVID year. I'm super excited that there's an emphasis on social, emotional learning that is a jam of mine, and I just, I'd love to hear what our teachers, what they've seen in the classroom now, why this program, you know, how has it already impacted our students? And then my other question is, and again, Friday memo, you're good, I just, I'd love to know if our, this curriculum is going to affect our special education, early childhood, and I just want to make sure that we are listening and getting a good read from those parents as well. So I was just curious, and we can talk about this later, you know, I'll ping y'all, but I just, those are kind of my thoughts, but good work.
Great. I think that's great feedback, we can get that to you. I did have one comment from a teacher, in case y'all ask, what did the teachers think? Teacher feedback includes the following highlights. Frog Street promotes children learning through play and provides differentiation strategies at point-of-use. So what's really neat about this, and I know y'all got to see it, and we were excited to share, when you open up a lesson, right there is the way to differentiate for all learners. And so, it's embedded, and that's one of the things that Frog Street had that the other ones didn't. So, a teacher that may be new to this, wondering how do I adapt this, it's right there. So it's really, that was one of the things that really sold us on it, and we were very glad that, but we have lots of feedback from teachers, so we can definitely share that with you. Any other questions? All right, next time we'll do a public hearing and vote on it then. So, appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. When you do the public hearing, do you bring the resources up here as well?
We don't, but we probably could. They're not, to bring a kit wouldn't be too hard to do, so we could.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful, because it was so nice to see it all and get them to look through it.
It is, get your hands on it.
To quickly see it, yeah, it does.
Sounds great, thank you, Sarah.
If it's not too much trouble, that'd be tremendous. Okay, we will move on to our next item. Kendra just likes sitting with us. I mean, A4, 5, discussion of early childhood program expansion. Let me see, who's going to be up? Kendra Wainens and Matt Benz.
Thank you and good evening, glad to be here. And I think Matt is actually going to start us out on this one, so, without further ado.
Kendra was on such a roll, I just wanted to keep it going. So, the purpose of the presentation, this presentation this evening, is to give you an overview of our current early childhood services, and then to go through a proposal that we'll be asking for action on at our next meeting relative to establishing a pre-K offering for three-year-olds within the criteria currently set up by the, by TEA and state legislature. And then we will also be providing some information about a strategic restructuring of our early childhood communities that supports collaboration and building inclusive communities.
So, before I get started, I do want to say how excited I am to be here and to discuss this journey that we're on, because it is a journey. And we don't have the, all the answers here, but I want you to know that that's what we're about, is trying to continuously improve. A lot of the people that are doing the work on this, it's a lot of details to move forward on any kind of programs, are the early childhood leadership, and I'd like to just acknowledge them here tonight. Just wave. They moved up to the second row, I tried to get them in the first row. But very, very thankful of the expertise that we have in this department leading this. So, always want to start off with the vision that we have for our early childhood education in Leander. We really believe that young children develop, learn, and thrive in play-based environment, which is rich in language, positive social interactions, and strong family partnerships. We believe in the equity and access opportunities, so our goal is really to increase to high-quality, inclusive educational opportunities and experiences. And how we're going to do that is create a comprehensive early childhood program that aligns and expands programs and services that we already have in our district, and then we have them all the way from birth to age five. We also always want to point out how this aligns, and this work aligns, to our core beliefs, to your core beliefs, to the district's core beliefs, and with the whole child, it's really about the LISD family relationships and resources. Relevant learning, we want developmentally appropriate environment and play-based instructional model. We want deeper learning, it really starts with the early childhood. It's the hands-on experiences with choice. We want collaborative relationships, general education and special education teachers working together. So just to give you a kind of high-level view of all the programs that we have in our district in early childhood, we have parents as teachers. I think you've heard about that one, where we really work with the parents, because the parents are the best teacher of a child, and we want to really strengthen that and bring them in early to be a partner with the school district. We have Young Parent Services, which is a whole continuum of services that we provide for our students and teen parents. We have partnerships with Acts of Love, which is another wonderful partnership through Acts of Love, is the name of the nonprofit organization, that helps support our young parent teens and working with their babies, and also developing through, and making sure that they don't drop out of school, that they keep school a priority. We are doing partnerships with Head Start for our three- and four-year-olds. That's a very important combination, because they can provide wraparound services that we always can't do. However, there is a limit on the number of students they can serve, so it's important to have that collaboration and partnership with them. We went to a full day pre-K last year, and we actually, even though our enrollment wasn't where we want it to be, we still enrolled more four-year-olds than the year prior. So we enrolled our 501 student, and I got a call from our senior coordinator and said, we made it, we made it to 501. Of course, it transitions through the year with pre-K until we're back down to 499, but we're still hopeful that that's going to continue to grow. We already serve three-year-olds in our district. It's through our early We already serve three-year-olds in our district. It's through our early childhood special education program. And then we also have our structured learning environment, which is geared towards students with autism and really giving them the structure that they need in order to be successful. We also have something called a PSLIP program. That is a preschool speech and language program. So maybe a student doesn't need that intensive, all-day type of interaction through special education. They just need some support with a speech pathologist. So we have a speech pathologist run a short pre-K program where they can really just work on those language skills. And we also provide speech-only services where they just may come in for some work with a speech pathologist in articulation. So a whole variety of programs. So why are we here talking about three-year-olds? Because early matters. I shared some research with you, and there is a lot of research out there. So to try to put it down to one or two slides is a little bit much, but there were a couple of things I just wanted to hit on. By age three, the brain has grown to 80% of adult size. We want to build lifelong brain connections in early childhood programs. They are key for, at that age, 80% of their brain is developed, but then they start latching on to those experiences, start pruning out the ones that aren't valuable, and start making those connections that set a foundation for their educational career. So it's very important that we utilize that very important time to make those connections for all of our three- and four-year-olds. This really is about starting partnerships with families early. If we can start building that relationship where we're all in this together, then that's what we want to really try to enhance. We also believe that early and urgent intervention is key and crucial. You want to close the gap before there are any gaps, instead of trying to play catch-up when there is already a gap occurred. NEAR, which is the National Institute for Early Education Research, says that they've done a comparison of students that are in pre-K for one year compared to those that have been in pre-K, in a high-quality pre-K, for two years. So when we talk about pre-K eligibility, having that additional three-year-old and four-year-old year really should make a difference in closing some of those gaps. So we want to talk about our proposal. As I said, we already serve three-year-olds in our district, but it's limited to only special education students. We would really like to expand. The state has given us the opportunity to receive half-day ADA, and we would like to open our doors to our three-year-olds, have early access for all three- and four-year-olds who qualify for pre-K. So our plan, this is what it would look like. We would have open enrollment for students that qualify. We provide mixed three- and four-year-old classes on 15 early childhood community sites, which we will talk more about in just a minute. We want to begin with our current staff allocation. So what you always ask yourself is, what is this going to cost us? So right now, with the staff that we have, we have a lot of room for growth. And we would like to infill that with our three-year-olds and four-year-olds. You're not hiring an additional teacher for a three-year-old. You're mixing the three- and four-year-olds together. We do need some training for our teachers on what that looks like. But if you work with three- and four-year-olds, they, their skills are scaffolded all up and down. They're very similar in, in certain ways. So we'll do some training on that, but we really think by mixing those programs, we'll be able to fill our classrooms. We also want to, I, I do want to say, if we get high enrollment and all of our classrooms are busting at the seams, then yes, that would be a need for more teaching positions. But right now, we really feel like we could start this program, fill up our classrooms with our current allocations. We have a minimal need for additional materials, and partly that's due for our, our vision for putting all of our programs on first 15 sites, because then they're able to share materials and resources. Again, I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. Transportation, we're not talking about adding any routes. We already have routes for three-year-olds that run, and they have a monitor on the bus and other three-year-olds. Like I said, we need training for e, early childhood teachers and, I would say, principals. We want to obtain the half-day average daily attendance funding, which is provided by the state. So let's talk about the strategic restructure. Right now, we have 13 early childhood communities. About six years ago, we started the journey of putting our pre-K teachers on a community. The reasons for that were we had singletons out there, where there would be one pre-K teacher who maybe had taught a morning and afternoon class, and they had no time for true collaboration with other educators, and they were a singleton by themselves. So very limited amount of collaboration, and we know in this district how we feel about PLCs. And we wanted to see that for our pre-K teachers and really put a professional lens on what we're expecting with our teachers who teach our three- and four-year-olds. So we did that about six years ago. And we had expanded to 13 early childhood communities, which was really pre-K. Right now, 12 programs out there are early childhood special education, what we call standalone campuses. So let me give you an example. At a campus, there may be one early childhood special ed classroom. So their collaboration and their work with other teachers is limited to the day that Erica pulls the teachers together, or by Zoom or whatever, to work together and to collaborate. What we really want to do is bring them into the community so that we can create a rich environment for all of our students. Not just the special education at one campus, not just the four-year-olds, but we're able to create a true inclusive environment, what's best for all three- and four-year-olds. So this shows you where we're proposing these sites. Again, I want to stress how important it is that when we do something like this, that we're able to share resources. You might have an instructional assistant in an early childhood classroom with low numbers and a pre-K classroom where you have a child that may need some extra support. We have the ability to share that resource. So it's a whole environment that is set up conducive to earliest learners, sharing resources, sharing trainings. Think how neat it would be to have a faculty meeting that was all about early childhood. So the 15 inclusive early childhood communities, this is where we are proposing them. When we talk about why we're proposing them there, we also are looking at where can we house the number of these students? Where, where do we have room? So it does relieve overcrowding at Aiken, Blockhouse, Parkside, Reed, Steiner, and Whitestone. We still have a lot of discussion to do with teachers at this point and what makes sense and how we're going to work together to build this. It does increase utilization at some of the campuses that have the space. So we would utilize Cox, Cypress, Fabian, Nauman, and Tarvin to try and grow those communities at those campuses. I know that y'all have some questions about that, so I'm going to pause right here and see what kind of questions you have.
Can I just put in a couple, just a couple of comments before we get going? Number one, this is not the, this is not the reason, this is not the, the number one priority of the plan. This is just what we've been talking about in the last couple of meetings relative to what is the way forward to improve opportunities for our students, to increase access and equity. When we look at, when we look at the, the data that we brought, that we brought and y'all talked about and looked at, and we've looked at in our system relative to AP participation, relative to IB enrollment, relative to graduation rates, relative to college-going culture, relative to who's in special education, relative to any of those things. There is so much that we can do and we have planned and we continue to plan to do in, you know, in fifth grade, in seventh grade. What can we do, you know, as they go into high school to get them more involved in advanced placement and advanced program opportunities? Early childhood is where that begins, and it's, it, it is the most logical place to start, like Kendra said, to address achievement gaps that become opportunity gaps, skills and expertise gaps. When they are the smallest, we get them as early as possible so that when they hit kindergarten, they are ready. Kinder readiness, we've talked about this before, is such a huge, and I will stop now. I'm going to wrap this up.
I've got three mics that I saw light up while you were talking, so.
I'll just say this. Kinder readiness is such a huge predictor of success, going all the way into high school graduation rates, college-going, college enrollment and acceptance, and finishing college, and then even into the career choices and earning potential of, of, as they enter into adulthood. And I'm going to stop talking now.
Okay, so, love the idea, love all of the whole thing. A couple of questions. How many rooms per campus do you see this happening in? Is it one classroom on these campuses that are listed, or is it multiple classrooms of kiddos?
Need to punch that button? I actually have a working document. I, I was kind of hesitant to share it because this isn't set in stone.
Sure.
This is a proposal, and so I am going to share this with you. This kind of shows how we're thinking of which campuses would lose a program and go to another program and what that would look like at that new campus. So I'm going to pass this around. Donna, do you want to?
And then next question is, you know, this is probably going to be a big hit, right? And so I guess my question is, if we have this huge influx of families that want to take advantage of this, of this situation. I know previously we discussed having a, not just families that qualify under the state qualification. I understand there's, there's an issue there, but what about families who want to take advantage of this opportunity? And will they have the option to do that? So that's my next question.
I can address that, I think, if you want. So one of the things we know, as we've talked about planning for the next year, is how carefully and strategically we have to plan and how tightly we have to plan and project for, to, to have a very conservative budget to bring forward based on resources, based on, based on potential enrollment for next year. So that is one of the reasons why we, we anticipate that we will. For instance, our 501, our 499 four-year-olds, you know, there's, there's 1,000 four-year-olds out there that are going to be eligible next year. And as, as people continue to get their vaccines, as we continue to roll through and cautiously optimistic about a return to some semblance of normalcy, we do anticipate that we will get more, more and more four-year-olds. 500 during a pandemic is a pretty, a good statistic.
Yep.
We, and there's about that number of three-year-olds. We expect that that will pick up probably a little more slowly. But we are not, we're not going, we've worked with Elaine hand in hand, and we have committed to not, not allocating staff until we are, are meeting with parents. We are signing kids up, and we are, we know for a fact that we are, we have people coming in and that they are signed up and that we're, we're going to be, they're going to be coming to the school. Right now, we are staffed right where we are staffed, and we are going to wait until we have, we have that kinds of, the kinds of sign-ups. So your, your second question was around tuition-based pre-K.
Correct.
The board did approve a pre-K plan overall last year that included tuition-based pre-K. We did, I believe, make a prudent decision to hold off on that this year based on being able to meet the needs of, of all of our students and being able to meet the space needs for increased safety and, you know, separation of students in, in schools. That was really challenging. And this year, as we head into next year, we still want to play it conservative and just gauge the interest. So right now, we're only really planning for a really small cohort, just to test, test the waters, that will also serve along with three-year-olds, just to infill the current program that we have. Because, you know, just, you don't, if you have a class staffed for, you know, and it's like you're expecting 15 kids, they don't, you know, you might, you're not going to get 15, you know, the exact right number to split them into groups of 15 or 17 at, in a, on, you know, in a campus. And so there's going to be space, and the idea is to do it very strategically so that we are maxing out our resources and being the most efficient that we can with, with how we are, are making use of our spaces. So that being said, I agree with you as well that I, you know, Leander ISD does a very good job of educating students. Y'all see to that. And I anticipate that as people get, have that experience, it will catch on, and more families are going to want to take advantage of the tuition-based pre-K. I don't think it'll be a matter of nobody being interested. I think people are going to want us to have more spots. So we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, and that'll be, I think it could be a useful source of revenue. It's a useful way, as we are worried about enrollment, as we don't know what our enrollment's going to be, it can be very comforting and help provide us some more firm numbers when we know that kid, when kids already are showing up as three-year-olds, as four-year-olds during tuition-based pre, pre-K. And not only are they there, and we're able to collect some money for that, and there's a revenue stream, but then we know, hey, heading into kindergarten, we know we're going to have this many kids because we're already serving this many kids. And it'll just help us to really firmly establish that, that, that continuum of education for our students. And I'm going to stop again.
And my, my last little piece of this then is, is one more thing is, when you have this plan to move certain ones from certain campuses, are you moving them in such a way that the community that is placed there now? I understand transportation is, is, would be included, but does that give families an opportunity to still be in their community schools? That's a concern, and it, you don't necessarily have to answer to any of that. I just wanted to kind of state that, that it, that it could be a concern for underserved areas to now have to go farther to get their kiddo to school.
So we tried to strategically place the programs. We know that we have a lot of qualifiers, let's say, in our, our north. And where do we have room to be able to do something like that? But what we really want to see is that our community becomes the three- and four-year-old community. And, and when you talk about where are three- and four-year-olds right now? They are usually with mom and dad at home, or they're in a pre-K center somewhere. And what we really want to do is try to change that mind shift to we're developing a very inclusive, resource-rich learning environment for three- and four-year-olds. So it will be a change of being on a community where my child is from this to this grade, right? So some of that is a change. Some of that has already happened. There are classrooms, like we have an early childhood singleton at Cypress with no pre-K, four-year-old pre-K. So that early childhood program, when a student is three, turns four, doesn't have the access to a four-year-old program unless they move to another school, or they decide not to have the services, which is sometimes what they choose. So it's not, I don't think it's going to be easy. I think that we are going to have to do a lot of talking with our community and our teachers about why we would do this. What's, what's the real reason we would do something like this, and what are we trying to create? We did get to meet with, we had listening sessions today with teachers. We had 109 participate. And overwhelmingly, the one thing that they said is, thank you so much for giving us a team to work with. We've had tears. We've had, but I've been at this school forever, and now I'm going to move. And, and that is hard. That, that's hard. Change is hard. You'd be, build relationships. That's what we want, is a community at an elementary school. So like I said, we don't have all of the answers. It's a journey. But I think this allows us that opportunity to really work with teachers and have them be a part of building what we want to see.
Anna, I see you're lit up.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to say like four more words. It's probably going to be a whole sentence, and I will be concise. This is a work, this has been a work and evolution. It's not, this isn't a brand-new plan to create early, early childhood community centers or hubs. We have had them prior to this, and then last year, when we were moving to the full-day pre-K program for four-year-olds, you'll recall, you saw presentations, that we went through seven different proposals. Or seven, it was, you know, not only iterations of one plan, but plans that were completely different. Putting programs on every single school site, putting, building two early childhood centers, one in the north, one in the south. Having seven, seven, you know, early childhood communities. We talked to every single principal. We talked to transportation. We talked to child nutrition services. And every, we worked with finance and HR, and everybody working together came up with this plan. Actually, this year, we currently have 12 or 13 or 14, I'm sorry, I can't, 14 early childhood communities. childhood communities right now. And so, the difference this year is really about bringing those singletons into the fold and bringing the teachers that are teaching early childhood special ed programs in single classes by themselves into a community where they can work with other teachers and students that are in general education programs and have the ability to not only plan together, but the students will have opportunities to interact as well.
So, I hear a lot about three- and four-year-olds. But what about our ELE and ESLE programs? I've had, y'all know, my child went through three years of the ELE program, and I credit Leander ISD for early intervention in saving him. Because of this, the program we had, we're able to be where we're at. But I, I'm curious, like, what is this going to look like? Those campuses, I see that as a parent, we know that they're a strong special education hub. And to me, it looks like we're tearing apart that. So, what does that look like? I like, I love this vision, but I need y'all to explain this to me a little better. Because as a parent, you know, to a child in ELE, I'm just wondering, like, how is this going to affect my child's support? How is that going to affect our community? But most importantly, like, when we're ready to graduate from that ELE program, what does that transition look like? And then, one question. Have we consulted the SEPTA at all? And did the COPIA report address any of this? And if not, why haven't we connected those dots? Because I feel like we've done a really great job, I'm sorry, y'all have done a great job at really connecting with the special education community and building that trust. And I'm worried that this is going to take that trust away. So I'm just curious, is there any plans to reach out to those families and talk to them and explain the positives to this?
Well, first of all, I appreciate that, because I think that's a great point. I think that this is kind of, it's a journey and all these pieces that have to fall together before we could even get to that point. And I think that's a great, a great suggestion that we need to look into. I work very closely with Kimberly. As you know, I'm aware of the COPIA report and was part of that in the initial phases. So, I do feel like it does. We have lots of feedback, all the way back from the PAC, remember when we had the advisory, Program Advisory Council? And a lot of this was talked about in that, about how the inclusion piece. And so, when you say you have wonderful programs, absolutely, that's fantastic. We want to have those in a community hub. And what's really exciting about it is I would say that we are going to be able to intensify the resources for all students, whether it's language, whether it's special education needs, on those hubs. So, instead of focusing on 23 sites and having 23 evaluators that are doing pre-K, early childhood special education evaluations, all the way up to their fifth graders, they can really be focused on 15 campuses and be really skilled in working and evaluating with our early childhood students. So I think that's another benefit. We talked about Childfind before. It's so important that the parents, the idea is no wrong-door approach. A parent can call one number, and we say, "Thank you for calling us, we've got you. We serve three- and four-year-olds." They don't have to go over here for this program, over there for that program. They come to one of the sites that's close to their home campus, and then they can get a rich service that is true inclusion and have services all around them. Instead of them having to go to those services, the services are going to be there for them. And I also think that it allows our Childfind department to really spend some more time going out into the community and out into doctors' offices. The whole idea behind Childfind was to go find those students, bring them in, and evaluate them. And so, that gives us more flexibility when we have teams of highly specialized early educators and evaluation staff in order to do something like that. So, don't have all the answers with that, but I think we're on the right path to do that. Transition, you asked about transition. Transition is always tricky, right? And even when they're on the campus, moving from one grade to another, there can be difficulty with transition. We have to really get good at that. We have to work with Kimberly's team and figure out, okay, now we have a meta-center or a hub, how do we transition successfully to wherever they go for kindergarten? And I see that similar to what we're doing right now with our early childhood Childfind. They come to us as three-year-olds, we have to transition them into the district. So it's a transition from that hub to their school campus. So, we have to get better at that.
I'd love to just, later, because y'all know I could talk about this all night, and I won't.
Me too, Anna.
I'd just love to maybe catch up with you and Kimberly, just to know what that transition looks like. Because I know a lot of our students in these programs have trouble with transition, and it's a scary place also for a parent. You're sending your child, and you see them succeed, and you want to stay attached to that campus. But you and I both know that you've got, you've got to make that transition to get ready for the next stage. So I'd just love to talk to y'all later more about that.
Love that, thank you.
So, taking a little bit of a different approach. First of all, for the early childhood folks, how incredibly exciting is that, to be the ones to lay the foundation for these students to have a successful career? That just hit me as we were talking through all of this. I'm like, three- and four-year-olds, and here this team is, that's a tremendous amount of responsibility, but it has to be a tremendous reward as well. So, hats off to all of you for the job that you do. We've talked about, as this program is rolling out, we're talking about facts and assumptions, we're talking about constraints and limitations. I think it was back on Slide 8, we were talking about some of the cost involved with us. What happens if this is so successful that you have to come back and say, "Hey, we need some more funding," right? I'm going to throw something out there, and then tell me if I'm on the right track. The cost of properly preparing our three- and four-year-olds for a career or a tenure through K-12, that cost is so small compared to the RTI and all of the support costs that we would have to then spend, because a lot of the things that we would catch in three- and four-year-olds, right, catch it early. There's a real ROI story to be made. And so, am I on the right track when I'm thinking that the investment needs to be in the early education?
So, it sounds like you've been doing homework or research. That's what it sounds like. Because that is what the research shows, is that the more investment that you make early on, the less investment you have to make as a society with the prison pipeline with, and nobody wants to go there and think that, but there is statistics and research that shows that good, high-quality, early education can save money to the community on the long run. So, you're right on with that.
Yeah, and it's not research into that, per se, but I am researching how to decriminalize poverty. So, this is, this is certainly a component of that. I think it's going to be a very successful program. I'm going to be perfectly honest, because that's the only way it ought to be. I'm hearing, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, in terms of what happens when this program takes off and we're not able to fully support it. What I'm really interested in, how do we plan for that? Because I think it's coming. I would rather not cross the bridge when we get to it. I would like some advance notice of what the bridge may look like, so that we can start putting that money into the proper budget format, so that when it happens, because it's going to happen, that we can fully support it, because it is that important. So, again, thank you for the work that you do. This is, this is the most exciting part of public education, in my opinion, and I'm looking forward to getting behind it in a big way.
To piggyback what Jim says, I mean, if we're truly going to embrace our childhood communities, I really would like to see our future schools actually have a childhood wing. Like, if we're going to truly embrace this and make it our mission, we need, I don't know if I can say that, but I'd like to see our future schools actually have, we are built for that. Because I just, we know that it's here, we're really going to get behind it. I want to, actually want to see some action to it. So, that's just my thoughts on it, how I feel. Like, I want to see that. I want to actually see those hubs, not just moving classrooms around. I want to see us actually building an early childhood wing or center just dedicated to them.
And I second.
So, I love that y'all said that, and I think what's perfect here is the work we're doing as a district with the long-range facilities planning, and that we are focusing in elementary, and Sarah Grissom asked me to be a partner with her in the elementary side. So I'm very excited about putting that information out to the community and seeing what type of support and interest that we come from, comes from that. So, I think it's a great, great thing to start discussing.
Dr. Gering, this item is in our, will be on our next meeting, when we have like our full, regular meeting, which will be March 25th. So it's like a month from now. So, it's, well, 20, I don't know, February 25th, March 25th. So, I guess my question is, trustees will have a journey along the way, we'll be calling, reaching out, and asking questions. Do you have any words of wisdom or advice or thoughts as we start asking questions and kind of study this more in depth as we go along? Because we are going to be asked for a vote when we come back on March 25th.
Yes, so, I am a huge proponent of early childhood education. We know without a shadow of doubt, as you've heard, the impact that it has on student achievement throughout the district. And we know that when we build that firm foundation, then everything else is possible later on. And so, I'm happy for you to visit with me, and we'll get you in touch with the folks who know way more about this than I do. And we will talk about all of these additional items that are related, because as we go through core beliefs, as we look at vision, as we look at mission, as we talk about, all of these things are interconnected, long-range facilities planning, all of these things are connected to each other. And so, you'll see all of this coming out, community-based accountability, all of these pieces come together. So, I'm happy to visit with you. I'm glad we have a little bit of extra time to talk about that and resolve some of these difficult challenges, because they are difficult challenges. Just remember that we are here, when you look up there, the Leander ISD learning model, what's right in the middle of that is a focus on student learning. And we have to prioritize what's right for kids first, and then we have to say, how do we, you know, make sure that the systems are in place to make that happen? Sometimes, we have to sacrifice some of the convenience of the adults in that process. But when we do what's right for kids, it pays off in the long term, and everything becomes possible. So, thank you for your patience, and thank you for facing the challenge with us.
All right, thank you very much. And I guess that concludes the whole trilogy of presentations. Thank y'all.
I guess I'm finished. Thank you.
No, thank y'all so much. We will move on to Items 8B under Governance. We already had our legislative update. You are going to love this. I'm going to go through the Board Operating Procedures. My goal is three minutes or less. Holly Wardell said that she didn't get any other questions. So I'll show you what the main changes are. If you look at Page 1, we're changing, because we'll be updating it in 2021 when we do our vote on it. If you scroll down to Board Meetings, Item 4, we changed the language to match what we're doing now, which is when we meet. And then, it's highlighted, so when we adopt this, we will not be adopting the highlighted, but the highlight was to point out the section for citizen comments, but we would be adopting the underline section there, where when we have regular meetings, people may address board items on the agenda or non-agenda items. But when we have special call meetings, the public may comment only on items on the agenda. And as y'all hear me say, the board will see further procedures of how to conduct themselves in citizen comments is enumerated in our Board Operating Procedures. All of that detail is actually written here in our Board Operating Procedures. We don't deliberate, or make decisions on an item not posted on the agenda. You can ask clarification questions, but there's not back and forth. All that good stuff is in there. Closed meetings, nothing's changed in there. So you'll scroll down to, I think there's only one of this, oh yeah, travel, that's where it is. Going down to 15, travel reimbursements, new language was there. That was worked out through administration. This was as a result of our auditor's good work, finding that we needed to have some travel language in place. And so, that is now in place in our Board Operating Procedures. This is a document that we can keep updating, and in theory, we'll update it every year. If you see something emergency you want to do, we can always put it back on the agenda. But unless you have any heartache, we can go ahead and approve the changes tonight if somebody has a motion.
I move the board, approve the Board Operating Procedures as presented.
I second. I have a motion from Anna, a second from Christine. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to Item 8B3, 2021, 2022, Board Meeting Schedule Discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. You do have the calendar attached in Board Book. I'll start with the end in mind, so when you look all the way to June of 2022, which sounds like a long way away from now, but not too far away from now, you'll see meetings on the 9th and the 23rd. And I reference that because we try to get that meeting in June, the second meeting in June, remember, is budget approval. And so, that flips us back to where we are this June, which will be two meetings in June, on June 10th and June 24th, that kind of mirror what's going to happen next year. But that influences what we do in July. And so, we'd like to propose that we just do one meeting in July, on July 22nd. July tends to be a lighter month for us, after the craziness of ending school in May and then doing budget and all of those important things in June. So we'd like to propose that. In August, we are going to make sure that we avoid the first day of school, having a board meeting on the first day of school, because we don't like to do that as administrators. And so, you'll see meetings on the 5th and the 26th. And then, we try to get in a bit of a rhythm of trying to make sure that we have meetings, so we don't have two meetings in a row, a week, week over week. So, in September, we have 9th and 23rd, October, 7th and 21st. And what happens in October influences what happens in November, because we have to push because of Thanksgiving to the 4th and the 18th. So, we still have a week in between the 21st of October and the 4th of November, so that just keeps the rhythm going. In December, we'd like to only do one meeting, that's traditionally what we do, on the 16th. And then, January, February, March, straddles spring break, and that's how we're doing it this year. We hope that will work, but it allows us to have two meetings in March, and then April, May, and then we're back into June again. So, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
Are we going to talk about this again? Or is this just for tonight's, is this the only time to talk about it?
It will come for action on March 23rd, or 25th.
Board members, is that okay to move it to consent? All right, if you have any questions between now and then, please reach out to Bruce or Donna. All right.
Thank you, Madam President.
Board members, also, seeing the summer calendar reminded me, sometimes it's helpful if we let Donna know if we're going to be out for extended times over vacation, especially as they're starting to set meetings or if special meetings come up. So, when you get those schedules set, if you let her know, she keeps great records over there. Thank you very much. All right, we'll be moving on to the next item, 8C1, Operations. Consider all matters incident and related to the issuance and sale of Leander Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds Series 2021, including the adoption of an order authorizing the issuance of such bonds in one or more series, establishing procedures for the sale and issuance of such bonds, and delegating certain matters to authorized district officials. That is a long agenda item, I have to say. I think it could very well win an award.
I think the next one is even longer, so.
I might figure out how to abbreviate it. Board members, this is what, this is what we talked about last time at our meeting.
Correct. Four short nights ago, that feels like four years ago. We presented a refunding proposal, and so, this is the delegation order that would get the ball rolling on preparing the documents and spells out the parameters that must be met in doing the refunding transaction.
Board members, if you don't have any questions, I need a motion.
I move the board adopt an order authorizing the issuance of Leander Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Refunding Bonds Series 2021.
And I am happy to second.
I have a motion from Gloria, a second from Jim. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. Moving on to Item 8C2, we're talking about, consider impossible action resolution to grant the superintendent the authority to continue wages for employees due to emergency closure of schools.
Yes, I believe you may have got some information about this Monday.
Yes, I believe you may have got some information about this Monday, but this is asking the board to approve the resolution, allowing the district to maintain wage stability for all employees due to the recent weather closures, when employees were not able to work.
So, yes, they, they weren't able to do what it is that we expect. But all through the year, our teachers have done so much above and beyond what, what we could ever imagine to ask them to do. I am absolutely honored to be able to bring this motion up and get this taken care of for our staff.
This is a motion. Jeff's like, oh, come on. I move that the board adopt the resolution to resolve that it is in the best interest of the district, consistent with board policy, including board policy DEA local, and that it further benefits and serves a public purpose for the district to compensate its non-exempt employees who otherwise would not have been paid for their regular duty schedule due to the district's early release and emergency closures on February 11th through February 23rd, due to inclement weather and facility issues. The public, the public purposes that are furthered include ensuring that the safety interests in closing district operations for an emergency are not compromised by the need for non-exempt employees to maintain a regular paycheck, to ensure the safety of all employees during these emergency periods, and to promote employee retention inconsistency in treatment. I further move that we authorize the administration to take whatever steps necessary in compensating those employees that are deemed eligible for the pay that would have been accrued, but for the district's need to close its school on an emergency basis was out of its control.
And I absolutely second that.
A motion from Gloria, a second from Jim. I was trying to combine your names there to say at the same time. Are there any other discussions? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. And we'll move on to the next agenda item, 8C3, consider approval of Leander Police Department Interlocal Agreement, Third Amendment. We discussed this at our last board meeting. If there aren't any other questions, we'll let John at least kind of make it up to the mic. We'll see if there, if there aren't any other questions. I need a motion.
I move the board approve Leander Police Department Interlocal Agreement, Third Amendment as presented. I second.
I have a motion from Christine, a second from Anna. Any other conversations? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on. John, that was quick for you. Good job there. But he was available, that's the point. Item 8C4, consider approval of guaranteed maximum price, GMP number three, for Elementary 28, Tarvin Elementary School. We, Jimmy told us about this at our last meeting. Jimmy, are there any, anything else you want to? Nope?
No.
There you go. Board members, any questions?
I have a quick question. And I spoke to this earlier about uninterrupted power supplies. In light of the, the recent weather event and the likelihood that we will experience severe weather in the future, is this something we're at least looking at moving forward in, in terms of some sort of uninterrupted power supplies?
For the entire facility or just portions?
Not necessarily for this building, but I'm talking, just like we talked about having the ultraviolet purification, right? That's, that's a lesson learned that we'll incorporate into future designs. Uninterrupted power supplies, is that something that we're going to look at?
Jim, are you trying to sneakily try on a subject to a different agenda item?
I was like, that's not this agenda item.
But it's okay. So you want to know, do we want to have a discussion on this?
Well, wait a minute. That, that is actually not what the intent was. I'm asking a question when we're talking about GMPs. Is that something that we're looking at?
We will. We'll be discussing it.
See, that was easy. Make your motion.
I move that the board approve GMP number three in the amount of $1,502,534 for Tarvin number, or, with Elementary Number 28, excuse me.
And I second without prejudice.
A motion from Christine, a second from Jim. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to the Business and Financial Monthly Reports, 8C5. Elaine, I could read them all out, but I think I'll just kind of leave them all together. The Budget Projections, the Monthly Bond Status Report, the Financial Report, the Investment Report, and the Monthly Tax Collection. Do we need to take them each, or can you, can we take them all at once?
You can take them all at once. They're just information items. The only one to really point out is on the Budget Projections. This is for expenditures through January. Our projections have improved since what I brought you through December. In January, we looked at a $31 million deficit, and now we're, we've lowered that to 26 million for the current year. This is still without hold harmless. So you can see in the revenue section, a $15 million decline in revenues. So that is why we're really hoping for hold harmless to drastically improve our current budget situation. And the other reports, nothing really to point out. Our tax collections are trending a little bit behind historical levels, so we continue to monitor that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the reports.
Doing a pause just so they look real quick.
I love the reports, Elaine. I really appreciate the reports in this format, and it's just made it very, very easy to see exactly what's happening. So just thank you.
Well, I was going to ask if there's room in the budget for uninterrupted power supplies, but apparently we can't talk about that.
To your comment, Elaine, as I looked at the multi-year history on collections at this particular milestone, while it looks like we're a little bit behind the last two or three years, it's maybe not unprecedented territory. Are there any particular concerns about the collection rate to date? Or do you anticipate that'll resolve itself? Where are the, the number of suits and the, the value of those suits an issue?
I haven't tied it back to the suits. We are not concerned at this point. I'm anxious to see what February looks like, because you can tell that's the next big month of collections. We started the year really strong. We were exceeding prior history, and then it, it slowed down. So I'm not sure what that is due to. We asked in November why our collections were up at that point. We do have a meeting with TCAD tomorrow to talk about the potential of a hit to values from the disaster from the weather event. So the good news from TCAD just keeps coming. But no, we'll continue to monitor this. And if February is trending down, then we'll start figuring out, you know, why, why are the collections down? There's not been any one indicator, like last year, of the refunds that is causing that.
All right, board members, if there aren't any other questions. Thank you so much, Elaine. Well, I know we have closed session on your agenda, and I hate to disappoint y'all, but it turns out we don't have those items in closed session to take up tonight, so there will not be a closed session. Therefore, if there isn't any objection, we will adjourn right now at 9:46. Thank you, board members, for a very good meeting. And thank you for everybody for joining us online and in the room.